You can change the screen.
Yep, sorry. Here we go.
Good morning. In compliance with notification requirements of Ohio's open meeting law in section one oh one point oh two one of the codified ordinances of Cleveland, Ohio, nineteen seventy six. Notice that this meeting has been publicly posted. All boards and commissions under the purview of the city planning department conducts its meetings according to Robert's Rules of Order. Actions during the meeting will be taken by voice vote. Abstentions from any vote due to a conflict adventure should be stated for the record prior to the taking of any vote. In order to ensure that everyone participating in the meeting has the opportunity to be heard, we ask that you use the raise hand feature before asking a question or making a comment. The raise hand feature can be found in the participates panel on the desktop and mobile version and activated by clicking the hand icon. Please wait for the chair or facilitator to recognize you and be sure to select unmute and announce yourself before you speak. When finished speaking, please lower your hand by clicking on the raise hand icon again and mute your microphone. We will also be utilizing the chat feature to communicate with participants. The chat feature can be activated by clicking the chat button located on the bottom of the web X screen. Call in users can unmute by using star six. All meeting activity is being recorded via the Webex platform. These proceedings are also being livestreamed via YouTube. All requests to speak on a particular matter via our website and email have been considered. We have also received emails from those who have provided written comment on a particular matter. Mr. Chairman, the meeting is yours.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, just one second, I'm going to stop sharing the screen out to make a configuration change. It'll just take a second.
All right. Everyone start wearing their pink this month, it's cancer awareness month. Think of your friends and family that went through.
Okay, there we go, we're back.
Okay, Michael, call the role, please.
Bowen.
Present.
Downing.
Present.
Booker. Curry.
Present.
McCray Scott.
Present.
Paul. Slade.
We have a.
We have a corn.
Thank you, Michael. The first is a lot consolidation hot split. It's permanent parcel number zero zero six, zero four, one, five, two, and one, five, three. The addresses are seven, seven, one, eight, and seven, seven, two, zero, Elton Avenue. Who who's here for this one?
Uh, my name is Dominic Sienna from City Architecture.
Hey, Dominic, go ahead.
Okay, um, we're working with CHN with these thirty sites here. I am joined by Kimberly Hurt and Gillian Esposito from CHN. We are constructing twenty-eight, two-story homes and two single-story ADA homes for these thirty sites. Uh, next page, please. The properties will be constructed between West Seventy-Sixth Street and West Seventy-Eighth, as you see here. Next, please. This actually is the wrong site, maybe?
This is what we have.
Can you please go to the next page?
These all say Lawn Avenue.
Yeah, I see that.
Wrong address.
Is there a way we could, um, hold this and have, um, them send you the right slides? Like, do this later in the meeting because it seems like we have the wrong slides, but if if City Ark has them, they can just make sure you put up the right ones later in the meeting.
Yeah, I can send them right now.
Okay, thanks, Dominic. Um, so can, maybe what we have to do is, and Maury's Tommy, can you kind of, when you get the email, bring it back up? Or do we need to wait to the end of the meeting? Because of how your slides go together?
I I can, uh, bring it, I can bring it up individually. It's not my preference, but we can do that.
Okay.
These may be correct, it's just the ad dress was wrong on the next page, actually. Is that, looks like it's on Elton. That's not the correct, so, wait, no, that is right, okay. It was just the wrong ad.
But this is, this is definitely.
Apologize. Yeah, that that is correct. It's just the address was wrong.
Okay. Is this, it, was the other one correct with the blue and the red? Um, let's see that again.
Yeah, that's on Elton.
That's correct?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay, so there's thirty-five foot widths.
Yes.
And and the, even though the address is wrong, you have a court behind and a street in front, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So let's try to do this knowing it's the wrong street address and it needs to be in the record that, um, the actual images are correct, but it's the wrong address.
Yes.
So keep on going, Dominic.
Okay. Th- this is the current lot sizes. They're each one twenty-six by thirty-five feet. Next, please. And to make the ADA home work on this site, we needed to readjust the lots to forty feet and the red should say thirty and not thirty-five. I apologize for that as well.
Okay.
Um, next, please. We are replating these to fit the ADA home on these two sites and as you see it fits well with the current configuration of it. Next, please. And these are the built ADA ADA and two-story homes that have been previously built by CHN that will be built on these two lots.
Mission members?
I move approval, Downing.
I second Curry.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, understanding that it was the wrong address and instead of being, uh, thirty-five feet on the one parcel, it's thirty feet, uh, to make it the other parcel, the forty-foot-one ADA compliant. Uh, Michael, call the role, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott. Dr. McCray Scott, are you there? Uh, Slade.
Yes.
She's on mute. She's on mute.
Okay, motion carries, um, good luck, Dominic.
Thank you.
Mandatory referrals, ordinance number seven, six, four, dash, twenty, twenty-one, authorizing the Director of Capital Projects to enter into an amendment to the lease agreement authorized by ordinance number six, one, uh, six, five, one, dash, fifteen, passed July twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen, with the Columbus Road Foundry LLC to construct a public boardwalk and private dock on city-owned portions of vacated Leonard Street to satisfy state of Ohio grant requirements. Who's here for this one?
Good morning, Suzanne DeGennaro with the Mayor's Office of Capital Projects, Division of Real Estate.
Good morning, Suzanne.
Good morning. Uh, so in two thousand and fifteen, the Foundry signed a lease with the city for, uh, portions of vacated Leonard Street. Um, and you can see on the slide there, it's depicted as a boardwalk that's between the Foundry's facility and the river. Uh, so they signed a lease with the city, uh, to to construct the public boardwalk and private docks. Um, the lease was for a ten-year term with two five-year renewal options. And last year, the Foundry was awarded grant funding from ODNR to actually complete the improvements of the public boardwalk. The, the, uh, in connection with that grant, ODNR will encumber the Foundry's property, including the portion that is leased from the city, uh, Vacated Leonard Street. And so we need to amend the term of the original lease to make it consistent with the encumbrance period of of ODNR, um, which is going to run for, as I said, fif- uh, fifteen years, um, beginning from when the, uh, improvements are complete, which is anticip- anticipated to be in the fall of twenty twenty-two. So we need to amend the lease term to add one additional five-year term. And in addition, we need to make the terms exercisable at the discretion of the Foundry instead of the Director in order to be consistent with the requirements of ODNR. Um, there's a couple other slides there, I believe, that, um, show, uh, what the finished boardwalk and the facility will look like once the improvements are made with the ODNR grant funding. And in addition, I do have, I believe somebody from the Foundry is on the, on the video and can answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Michael Ferry from the Foundry, happy to answer any questions. Morning, Michael. Commission members?
I move approval, Downing.
I second Curry.
Okay, we have a motion and second further discussion. It looks beautiful, by the way. Thank you.
Does.
Uh, Michael, call the role, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes, I'm having a few technical problems, I'm sorry.
Slade.
Yes.
And I know I'm a broken record, but the public access along the riverfront is just excellent, so thank you. So I always say that, but I mean it.
It's, it's always good to hear, thank you so much.
Thanks, Suzanne.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, the next is administrative approvals. Everyone take a look. And then I'll take a motion after you've read through them.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval, but I just want to make sure, um, Councilman McCormick, through Councilman's life, had some concerns about the Hotel Cleveland. I don't know if he, if everything has been settled with that or if he had other comments, but I move approval on the administrative approvals.
I will second, uh, Councilman McCormick did not bring any concerns to me prior to this meeting.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks, Charles. We have a motion, second further discussion. Michael, call the role, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Slade.
Yes.
Motion carries. Now we have a special presentation, Cleveland Harbor Eastern Embankment, uh, Resilience Study, Cheers, the project Cheers. Who's here for this one?
Good morning, Commissioners, uh, you have many project partners here this morning to present on Cheers and we're very excited to do so. I'm Sean McDermott, Chief Planning Design Officer, Cleveland Metro Parks.
Good morning, Sean.
Good morning. Uh, so would like to, first of all, thank you for your time this morning. If you're able to click back one slide, uh, we can get the geography set as to where we are. What you're about to see this morning is a culmination of over a year's worth of work uh, with many project partners, uh, in what we believe is a transformative plan, uh, for the Eastern Lakefront of Cleveland. And what we're talking about here is really what we see as a model, um, progress through partnership, how nonprofits, organizations, and governments can work together, uh, to create a plan that meets uh, and addresses many needs, uh, that we all collectively would like to solve. Next slide, please. So what Cheers is, um, nothing is worth doing if it doesn't have a great acronym. Uh, so Cheers is the Cleveland Harbor Eastern Embankment Resiliency Study. It is a study that was partially funded with the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation funds and then matched by the project partners here. Um, like I said, it was a year-long, in fact, over a years-long study uh, that really looked at how we can solve several, um, issues, address many issues, um, with nature-based solutions that really focus on environment, reconnecting our communities to the lake, enhancing public health, wellness, making sure that we are protecting and bolstering our economy, and also improving those aquatic and terrestrial habitats. Next slide, please. Um, again, geographically, the study concentrated on the area, uh, east of Burke Lakefront Airport and generally west of the Cleveland Lakefront Nature Preserve. Um, and we didn't just look at the exact lakefront, if you will. We really looked at how, uh, lakefront relates to the neighborhoods, uh, and vice versa. Next slide, please. They mentioned product, progress through partnership and, uh, this project really is a model of that, in our opinion. Um, you see the partners here on the screen and everyone will introduce themselves, uh, shortly. But between City Cleveland, Ohio Department of Natural Resources, Ohio Department of Transportation, Port of Cleveland, Metro Parks, and Black Environmental, Environmental Leaders Association, although we each have the unique set of challenges that we wanted to bring and solve with this planning study, collectively, I think what has been put together and is will be put before you this morning, especially with the assistance of WRT and KS, is really a transformational plan that we can all get behind and work together, uh, for the next, uh, hopefully, years and hopefully it doesn't take decades, but it will take some time to get done. Uh, next slide, please. So, uh, you've heard from me, Kelly Kaufman, you will hear from as well. And then we'd like to quickly introduce and give a little background, um, on each of our other presenters. Uh, so Freddie, I'm going to pass it to you and then Scudder.
Thank you. Uh, next slide, please. So with respect to Cheers, I do want to reiterate what Sean has said. Uh, we all attended a, uh, meeting, uh, earlier this week, um, that was hosted by the Metro Parks that brought together a cross-section of our community, uh, with representatives from key agencies. And the reason why I bring that up is because that is what it's going to take to transform our river and our lakefront. It's going to take partnerships. Each of us have a role to play and our fingerprints collectively are going to be all over these initiatives in order to make this project a reality. Just to give you a little bit of a synopsis about what those priorities are, the city of Cleveland, who really wants to focus on access and connectivity to neighborhoods, uh, introduce this area to the community south of it, uh, with fishing picnic areas and ensure that this truly becomes a recreational asset for the community. Uh, ODNR, a big part of this was about resiliency, habitat restoration, and environmental, uh, concerns. ODOT, uh, with respect to dealing with the interstate system, but wanting to make sure that safety is improved, um, that you can actually reduce maintenance costs. Um, when you look at the Cleveland Metro Parks, uh, in their aggressive approach to trail development to ensure that all of our communities are connected and that not just includes our neighborhoods, that includes the greater Cleveland area. Um, also increased natural areas, uh, these are all priorities of the Metro Parks. And then with the Port of Cleveland, um, um, in this initiative, one of the things that you see is, um, land assets are being created. And so the Port of Cleveland was very instrumental in helping to, uh, add land, uh, to, uh, our northern shore and to support the city for tourism and create places and spaces that people will want to come, um, not just from our neighborhoods, but from around the region and hopefully from around the nation. Next slide, please. So how did we get here? Um, the good thing about what's going on in the city of Cleveland right now, um, which really takes an egoless, you know, approach, is everyone understanding that we're all a part of a continuum. And, uh, each of our job is to help to do our part to advance the vision, uh, for our eight-mile, uh, stretch of waterfront. As you all recall, this is the Waterfront District Plan. And over the last fifteen or so years, we've been knee-deep in trying to advance, uh, this plan. All of the activity that you're going to be hearing about today is really leveraging this as a foundational component. Next slide, please. So a couple of things that we want to ensure that we do, uh, with this plan that actually dovetails and builds on the Waterfront District Plan is capitalizing on topography. Uh, topography is a huge advantage for us with respect to our neighborhoods and its relationship to the, uh, Lake Erie waterfront. Next slide, please. Uh, developing our parks, key. Um, one of the things that is critical, uh, with respect to this initiative is linkages and linking our green spaces uh, to our neighborhoods, uh, to create these natural oases, uh, throughout our city and region. Next slide, please. Can you please mute your microphone, please? If you're not speaking. Uh, also, creating accessible public spaces. It's one thing to have these assets, but, uh, neighborhood residents being able to easily walk, bike, uh, in order to experience these spaces will be, uh, very critical. Next slide, please. So when you look at this aerial, uh, one of the things that you see is you see a lot of dense neighborhood investment, but in that you see a tremendous amount of opportunities. And there are a number of things that we have to, uh, overcome. And we are making investments from an economic development standpoint that really is going to help to begin that process of creating the conditions and and creating the at land assets that will be worth connecting to, and I'm just going to talk about a couple of those. Next slide, please. Uh, one of those developments, for example, is the shoreline development, which is at, um, the, uh, Shoreway and, uh, North Marginal, uh, where East Fifty-Fifth Street, uh, comes together. Next slide, please. Um, another is the proposed East Fifty-Fifth Street, uh, development, um, which, uh, features higher density, uh, housing, mixed use, as well as attached, uh, townhouse development that will add more bodies, families, and, uh, individuals along that waterfront going from downtown out east. Next slide, please. And when you look at this area and you start to see these green connectors and you start to see Gordon Park, for example, and the need and desire to want to leverage that asset and how these new land masses are created, uh, that was a part of the, uh, Waterfront District Plan, you'll see how Cheers really begins the process of drilling down on how do you actually get that accomplished? What are the mechanics associated with that? And that is one of the key things that made this initiative very attractive, uh, to the city for its participation. Next slide, please. And of course, uh, from a, uh, big picture perspective, uh, the Connecting Cleveland Twenty Twenty Citywide Plan, um, waterfront access was key. Um, the vision that was identified as part of the citywide plan, projects and initiatives like Cheers, uh, really dovetail in support to advance the, uh, Connecting Cleveland Twenty Twenty, uh, Plan. Some of those key assets improves connections, building on our assets, creating opportunities and turning challenges into opportunities, uh, creating competitive urban places, um, providing choices, particularly for Cleveland residents, uh, who don't have choices, um, creating a diverse environment. Uh, and when we're talking about diversity, we're not just talking about people, we're talking about, uh, diversity in assets, diversity in opportunity, and most importantly, sustainability. You know, creating a healthful environment. And I want to highlight that as one of the key features, uh, of the Cheers Initiative is creating a healthier, uh, environmental condition on our eastern waterfront. Next slide, please. And some of those immediate challenges, uh, that we're facing, uh, that we all know, uh, are critical. We have, uh, habitat quality and shoreline protection that's needed, uh, because there's many challenges that, uh, waterfront communities along the lakefront has has experienced. Um, impact on critical infrastructure, we know that there's some hurdles to overcome, um, with infrastructure investment, uh, that served as barriers, uh, between the community and, uh, open spaces as well as our waterfront. Um, and just that overall lack of real community assets, communities like Glenville, um, being cut off, uh, in many respects and having pinch points in order to be able to access the waterfront. And then also, uh, with climate change and, um, environmental conditions becoming more challenging, um, wave action, storm, ice, and higher, uh, water levels. Next slide, please. And these are some ways that the Cheers Initiative will look at improving those things, restoring and creating new spaces for habitat, uh, finding better beneficial uses, uh, utilizing dredge material, improving access and connections to the lakefront and also economic development, spurring neighborhood and community development, making these neighborhoods south of the waterfront a destination. Next slide. I'm going to turn it over now to, uh, Chris Shefton, uh, from the Famigos Foundation, who's going to talk to you more about the engagement associated, uh, with this initiative. Thank you.
Good morning, um, my name is Chris Shefton. I am the Director of Real Estate Development for, uh, Famigos Foundation. Famigos, um, has been working, uh, with the Cheers program. Since onset to put together a, um, what we wanted to be a robust community engagement process in partnership, um, with the, uh, partners and stakeholders that you see um, listed on this side. And so from the beginning, um, the Metro Parks and the city of Cleveland worked very hard to ensure that the right stakeholders were at the table for this project. Um, and then from there, um, built a broader coalition of stakeholders to ensure that both, um, community, um, government and, um, the private nonprofit world have been engaged around this project since its inception. Next slide. So, as we all know, the world is different, um, since COVID. So in sitting down to plan, uh, the original engagement process, um, for this project, we thought it would be pretty traditional. Next slide. But in the world since COVID, what we know for sure is that in the engagement process for any planning that was happening across the city had to immediately change. And so the team immediately, uh, coalesced around this idea of how we can work, of how we could make the digital space as well as in-person and physical, um, presence possible safely throughout this. and physical um presence possible safely throughout this entire process. Next slide please. And so immediately the team developed a set of tools, uh a set of digital tools to ensure that the community had access to the project from the very beginning. Um working through Zoom, social media, um and being able to webcast through um different platforms allow for a broad engagement that very specifically was centered in neighborhood in Sinclair Superior and Glenville, but also um allow for a broader coalition of regional residents to be able to participate um in these conversations. Next slide please. And then we got really creative creative in terms of what in person and physical look like. Um and so obviously we could not meet inside spaces. And so the outdoors and actually so spot on for this particular project really created these awesome opportunities for us to engage safely with residents. And so um as we know throughout COVID, food banks um uh handing out PPE were so central, particularly on the east side of Cleveland in order to ensure and keep our residents safe and ensure that they're receiving um the equipment and the food that they needed. And so it would allow for uh metro parks um and the coalition staff to be able to um center at these events and be able to have conversations about this project. And then walkshops, um the consultant um had piloted um these walkshops and other projects that they worked on across the country and brought it here to Cleveland and had really great success being able to safely get people outside and really experiencing the lake so that they could provide um greater in-person feedback and really have that experience to be able to inform um everything that they were sharing with us. Um and then from there, um this is actually one of my favorite pieces. In order to engage young people, um just through conversation uh with the metro parks team and Famigos, we really wanted to be able to get the word out about this project, make sure that we're advertising about the walkshops and all of these experiences to talk about Cheers. And we came up with this great card um that had a lot of information about the project, but also was um something that the kids could color at home. So it allowed for an interactive experience where the parents were able to receive this awesome information about the project, but also the kids were able to engage with it as well. Next slide please. And so um in this coalition building and in these walkshops and our engagement with youth, we've been able to bring all sorts of people, um residents who live very close by, who don't get the opportunity and chances to experience uh our lake um in this way. Uh we know for sure that residents have expressed and actually experienced, as Director uh Collier stated, pinch points and barriers to be able to access the lake. And so we really um use these walkshops and opportunities as a way to get residents out on our lakefront, get them down to be able to have these experiences and show them the great things that are right next to their homes. Next slide please. Again, just more photographs of getting folks out on the lakefront and all sorts of people, as we mentioned. So we all know that, you know, the birders who come out to the lakefront and all the folks around the region who really enjoy this space, being able to see this connection of the entire region and neighborhood um really um highlight the great and wonderful opportunities um that are possible once we're able to make these investments. Next slide please. Um so as a part of this process, we wanted to make sure that we were collecting um data. And so we spent a lot of time trying to understand um what folks experience um of the lakefront is today. Um so sort of ground truthing, um what their current experience was. Um we wanted to understand um what users wanted to see based on that experience. And so really building off of the waterfront waterfront district plan from two thousand and four and really um trying to understand if um things that folks had previously said that they wanted um were that still things they wanted to see. We were um through, you know, a robust marketing campaign, we were able to get um six hundred plus participants in that first round. Next slide please. And from uh from there, from understanding and being able to ground truth, we then moved on to idea generation, really using the information that we heard through our first round of data gathering to really inform um uh how we were going to be able to collect these robust ideas of what people really wanted to see. And so this is really when the walkshops um and we also implemented a scavenger hunt were really critical and key to be able to get um folks out, as I mentioned, um experiencing the lake and get um get their minds really moving around what's possible out on the eastern lakefront. Next slide please. And finally, exploration. So we've been able to put all these awesome ideas together. Now we really want to test them out. We wanted to be able to um see if the recommendations that we felt so strongly about really um resonated with residents and if they um were on the same page with us in terms of that information that we collected during the first round. Did we really hear what you were saying? Um and so we really wanted to understand what folks thought would be most impactful um to um overall lakefront to serve um the region, but most importantly for the residents who live locally in the neighborhood. We really wanted to understand what is going to improve their overall experience and remove some of those barriers from them being able to participate um and experience the lakefront on a regular basis. Next slide please. And then finally, we refined it. Um and that's uh what led to um our early action projects and the overall plan that you see today. Next slide please.
Thanks, Chris.
Oh, um now I would like to uh turn the mic over to Mary Morton.
Hi, everyone.
And she will continue from here. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Chris. Um good morning, everyone. Thank you for having us today. My name's Mary Morton. I'm the Project Manager and Planner Urban Designer for the Consultant Team from WRT. Our team also includes KS Associates and Great Ecology. So as Chris was talking about in terms of the engagement throughout the process, we wanted to be really transparent with the community about how decisions were being made along the lakefront. So here's just a snapshot of the process that we undertook in that kind of final process where we were creating a final concept for Cheers. During the concept engagement, we looked at maximizing the experience of water, nature and community in our three themes and asked folks to vote vote on projects that they felt were most important. We then took all that information and combined it with engineering needs, stakeholder goals and other constraints to create a hybrid final concept for the area that balances all of these needs and provides multiple benefits. Next slide. So all of this was really in an effort to ensure community-driven resilience resilience. Um but before we dive in, I want to take a step back and think about what we mean when we say resiliency. So throughout this process, we framed resiliency through three lenses, the environment, the economy and the community. These three legs of resiliency were especially important to the eastern lakefront as as this area is an essential natural and cultural asset for adjacent neighborhoods and the city, and it sits at the intersection of social and economic vulnerability and hazards associated with climate change. We focus on improvements and strategies that would enhance the lakefront and adjacent communities' ability to survive, adapt and grow in the face of economic, social and environmental challenges and changes. Next. For the lakefront, this meant bringing the needs of the lake, the community and natural systems into balance to create a healthier community and ecosystem. Next. This played out in the plan by creating nature-based solutions that provide multiple benefits to the community, nature and the lake. The goals for the projects and ideas were to connect people and communities to the lake, program spaces that meet the needs of that community, protect natural systems that enhance the well-being of the lake and surrounding communities, and celebrate the legacy history and significance of the lake. Next. So the plan for Cheers envisions returning the hardened edge of the east side lakefront into a natural shoreline with places for people and nature. Next. We continue to work with our, you know, our team of engineers to determine how to best match community needs with those of the natural environment and storm and wave concerns. So the final plan really looks at how do we use beneficial use of dredge to expand park and habitat north by ninety, creating over eighty acres of new community park space, mitigating the impacts of the highway on existing infrastructure and parks and creating a sheltered cove where visitors can safely access the lake. Swaths of reforestation, new wetland and marsh habitat and naturalized shoreline are encircled by a comprehensive network of trails and tree-lined parkways that connect neighborhoods to the lakefront. Playgrounds, restrooms, picnic lawns, overlooks and concession areas are distributed throughout the lakefront to enhance the visitor experience. New gateways, expanded event lawns and increased educational and natural programming activate the edges of the area, while the protected cove, wetlands, reforestation, meadows and marsh areas provide an immersive natural experience in the heart of the city. Next. These spaces really work together to allow the shoreline to adapt while preserving habitat, creating a buffer to protect critical infrastructure and providing more spaces for the community to enjoy nature and the lake. And they all incorporate the top-rated goals voted on by the community that you can see on the screen here. Next. The top-rated projects from engagement sessions with the community are also included in the plan. This includes a protected cove, multiple trail experiences, including multi-use trails, nature trails and boardwalk trails, greenways that extend open space back into the community, lawn spaces, a shore for waiting and an island. Next. As Freddie mentioned before, I'll just talk a little bit about how the plan also meets some of those larger goals. So for the city, it helps to store up to three million cubic yards of dredge material, protects I ninety and improves safety. It also provides equity and recreation amenities and supports tourism and economic development. It also enhances nature with new natural areas, aquatic restoration and improved water quality, new habitat areas, over six thousand linear feet of softened shoreline and connected green corridors. It also improves access by providing a diversity of trail experiences and neighborhood connections that strengthen access for adjacent communities. And it provides the community with more places to engage with water, more passive and flexible recreation space that builds on what people already like about the lakefront, which includes fishing and picnicking. It also unifies existing park spaces along the shore and provides a go-to destination for the east side, including play spaces and intergenerational areas for community use. Next. So the plan is kind of organized in these three main components, the Isle, the Lakeshore and the Cove. Next. The Isle is an offshore island situated off the existing shoreline. It creates a new way to experience the lake. The lakeshore extends the existing shoreline, creating a welcoming, connected park space that interfaces with adjacent communities. Major gateways at Seventy Second Street, Fifty Fifth Street Marina, Martin Luther King Jr. Drive and a new pedestrian bridge adjacent to the former First Energy Plant connect the lakeshore with the St. Clair Superior, Glenville and Glenville neighborhoods. These gateways not only provide safe and accessible connections for pedestrians and bicyclists, but they also serve as trailheads, strengthening the existing local and regional trail systems. The lakeshore leverages existing activity nodes at Fifty Fifth Street Marina and North Gordon Park Fishing Area to create new gathering and recreation spaces to serve the community. Finally, the cove is nestled between the two, providing spaces for habitat restoration and water-based recreation in a protected area. Next. So the planned systems of community, nature, water and circulation really adapt to the changing needs of the surrounding community and the environment. Together, these systems work to bolster the quality of the natural environment, physical and mental well-being, safety and Cleveland's economic development and tourism. A variety of community-serving spaces lie on the lakefront and the Isle. This includes visitor amenities like concessions, restrooms, play areas, water recreation, including kayaking and fishing, as well as viewing and scenic areas where community members can take an expansive view of the city, flexible lawn and picnic areas for passive and active recreation and immersive natural experiences. Next. Getting folks down to the lakefront and circulating along lakefront was a key component of the plan. So the plan includes a variety of trail types to serve multiple user groups. Multi-use paved trails are available for walking, biking and running and connect to existing trails. Nature trails meander through new wetlands, marshes and habitat spaces and boardwalk trails extend over the water of the cove. These trails also connect back to existing regional and local trails like the Lake Erie Water Trail and the Cleveland Lakefront Bike Way. Next. The expansion of parkland adjacent to I ninety allows for the extension of Marginal Drive, now called Lakeshore Drive, which would include a new parkway connecting the parks. Parking lots and vehicular circulation hang off of this main park drive, allowing for the natural experience of the lakefront, improving the frequency of existing RTA routes and providing shuttles or microtransit loop that brings folks out into the aisle will also help reduce dependence on cars along the lakefront. Next. The creation of an offshore aisle allows for the softening or semi-softening of the interior of the cove. You can see in this diagram, the direction of wave forces are quite intense. The areas in red and orange represent the intensity of wave action, which necessitates larger stone and protection structures, while areas in green and yellow represent areas where the shoreline can be softened. Next. The protect the protection provided by these structures, including the Isle, allows for expansive new habitat and natural areas in both in-water areas and along the shore. Next. So finally, I'm going to walk through some of the experiences or rooms of the plan. Next. This graphic highlights the rooms we'll be walking through from the Gordon Hills at the end of East Seventy Second to the Habitat Loop, the Launch and the Shore, the Eastern Fishing Cove adjacent to the Fifty Fifth Marina and the lawn located on the Isle. Next. Situated at the terminus of East Seventy Second Street, the Gordon Hills rise over thirty-five feet above the existing lakefront, giving visitors stunning views of the shoreline, Lake Erie and the Cleveland skyline. The Gordon Hills provide a year-round note of activity changing with each season, offering sledding in the winter, leaf peeping in the fall and meadow wildflowers in the spring, as well as the prime firework and airshow viewing destination in the summer. Next. The Habitat Loop is located north of the current pinch point between I ninety and the lakefront. Here, trails meander along the loop and loop through the naturalized shoreline that includes marsh areas and wetland habitat. The trail connects the existing park spaces and new habitat areas, providing space for nature lovers, birders and walkers to enjoy. Visitors to the Habitat Loop will find a series of nature and boardwalk trails that loop through the wetland and shrub habitat. Next. The shore provides a new water-based experience along the eastern lakefront that many community members requested throughout the process. The creation of land from dredge material creates a safe place for visitors to wade and walk down into the water. This new amenity gives east siders a place to touch and directly interact with the water in a protected and calm cove. The Launch responds to the community's desire to have more spaces for water sports and in particular, places for visitors to rent and learn how to operate watercraft like kayaks, paddleboards and canoes. The Launch includes both an accessible slope deck and a naturalized shoreline area to launch watercraft. An adjacent building with a pavilion provides a centralized location for renting equipment, accessing restrooms and purchasing concessions. Next. The Eastern Fishing Cove builds off of the existing node of fishing activity at East Fifty Fifth and responds to a desire for more places to fish, areas where folks can be closer to the water and more viewing and observation areas to take in the picturesque views of Lake Erie in downtown Cleveland. Located adjacent to flexible lawn and event spaces, fishing amenities and restrooms create a node of intergenerational activity where families can spend the day fishing, picnicking and enjoying views of the water. Next. So out on the Isle, visitors can walk or bike across the bridge or paddle out through the cove to wander through vegetated trails, a tree-lined lawn and nature play areas, immersing themselves in a unique natural environment of Lake Erie. Created from dredge material, this barrier island provides protection for the shoreline, allowing the creation of a protected cove and softening and naturalization of the shoreline edge. Next. At Seventy Second Street, we're creating a gateway, which will become one of the key ways that folks enter the park spaces from neighborhoods, providing an essential link to communities with wayfinding, visitor amenities and gathering spaces. Next. Next. Oh, sorry. Um it so community greenways at Fifty Fifth and Seventy Second, it was really important for us to also consider how folks get down to the lakefront. So we envisioned a series of green neighborhood connections that extend park spaces from the lakefront back into adjacent neighborhoods. These greenways or green fingers next include safety improvements for pedestrians and bicyclists and new planting and street trees. Smaller vacant lots located along these streets create a potential for a string of pocket parks along the greenways. Next. Each of these street segments will undergo further planning and design work through the ongoing Safe Routes to Parks Initiative and the TLCI Grant. But as part of the initial visioning for the Cheers Plan, the team focused on what potential improvements could look like. We envisioned implementation of the city's Midway Cycle Track Improvement Plan along Fifty Fifth, where a landscape buffered central bike lane provides for greater bike access, while a multi-use trail segment along the north and south lanes provides for pedestrian access. Seventy Second Street is reimagined as a greenway with buffered bike lanes and multi-use trails as well as art planting, wayfinding along the current concrete median. Next. I'm going to pass it to Kelly to talk about implementation and ongoing engagement.
Great. Thanks so much, Mary. Uh I'm Kelly Kaufman with Cleveland Metro Parks and you know, I just hope everybody really shares our enthusiasm for the the vision that's been developed. Uh Mary and her team did a great job of listening to the partners, listening to the community and really creating this ambitious, but we think and really creating this ambitious, but we think achievable, vision for that eastside lakefront. Next slide, please. So it's really our task to take that vision and start to break it down into actionable elements. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Sharonda Watley with the City of Cleveland, and she'll talk about a couple efforts that are going to get underway shortly. So Sharonda?
Great. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. My name is Sharonda Watley. I am a neighborhood planner on staff with the Cleveland City Planning Department. And I'm going to talk a little bit about a TLCI award that we were notified of just a couple of months ago. So partnering with UCI Famikos Foundation, we submitted an application to NOAAAC to really study the connections from the neighborhoods, the adjacent neighborhoods, to these green spaces. And so we really wanted to leverage connections from Rockefeller Park. And we also wanted to do a deeper dive on redevelopment and land use planning in the hopes of spurring additional economic development in this area. So this is a $100,000 request. We'll be looking at bicycle, scooter, and pedestrian connectivity. We'll also be looking at transit planning. And we'll also be looking at additional connectivity to green spaces and recreational amenities. So we are very excited that this will be a really great next step for us. Thank you.
Yeah. Great. Thanks, Sharonda. Next slide, please. So, you know, along those lines, another project that took place this summer was working with Sharonda and City of Cleveland Planning, Safe Routes to Parks with a grant that was obtained by Byte Cleveland. A lot of interaction with the neighborhood, St. Clair Superior, Famikos, and events to really, you know, kind of spread the word about how to get to the lakefront now, to hear about what improvements can be made, and, you know, just to start building that energy. Next slide, please. So we also are working hard to improve the parks, you know, as they exist today. So there, hopefully, folks heard about the new comfort station located at East 72nd that has restrooms, kind of a big map to orient folks to the lakefront, and really can kind of serve as a great node along the Cleveland Lakefront Bike Way. We are also happy to have the Cleveland, or the Lake Erie Water Trail, Cuyahoga County, a state-designated water trail. We had the ribbon cutting for that this summer. So there is a lot of, you know, energy that continues to build. Next slide, please. And then this is really, you know, it's over and over. This is the story of partnerships. So through the support of Famikos, Bell, and Ingenuity Cleveland, we activated three lakefront pop-ups this summer. And the most recent one was just this past Saturday, Ingenuity at the Lake. And it's just really rewarding to get people out to the lakefront, to walk the connections between North Gordon Park, South Gordon Park, Cleveland Lakefront Nature Preserve, and to hear people say, you know, "Oh, I didn't, you know, I drive by this. I didn't really realize how great this is." And, you know, get people vested in the lakefront and just continue to build on that energy. Next slide, please. So the other thing that we've been really pleased to see as we wrapped up the plan back in the spring and had our public meetings, amazing media coverage. And our estimate is that this reached 8.5 million viewers. And so it really shows that that appetite is out there for improvements along that eastside lakefront. So it's really, again, up to us to move this plan into implementation. So next slide, please. So speaking to the next steps, next slide. Thank you. You know, this is a major regional project. We're kind of transforming some of the existing parks and greatly expanding parkland on the eastside lakefront. We've looked at different ways to implement. Initially, we kind of broke it down into a Phase A and B. But since then, next slide, please. We've gotten even more granular to look at, you know, how we chunk it down into these smaller phases, because they all really need to work together. Different components are eligible for different funding sources. And it's really going to be, you know, kind of a, gosh, I don't know. It's just going to be a mix of many, many types of funds, different partner-driven projects. And so to share kind of our pending next step, next slide, please. We do have a grant application pending for the next phase of the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation's Funding Track to do the highlighted areas, to develop construction documents so that we could really be on the path to building these components. And so what the proposed phasing does is really protects that shoreline and creates even that outer edge of the aisle where we're really buffering the energy that comes in off Lake Erie to start protecting that, the rest of the shoreline. So as we construct, you know, those additional areas of parkland, those can be built right away with softened shorelines and the opportunity to get people to be able to touch the water, which is something we just heard over and over again. Next slide, please. So again, you know, the price tag for Cheers is roughly 300 million. But as we look at that in context with other, you know, other major projects in the area, I think it's a great investment. It delivers a multitude of benefits and really does contribute to community resilience and is a project that all people can enjoy. Next slide, please. And so with that, you know, we're trying to demonstrate, you know, it's not going to all happen at once, but we do think that we can implement these projects that show short-term wins, improve the lakefront experience, improve habitat, improve resilience, and contribute to the local economy. So we're really excited about that. And I want to take this, we'll go to the next slide, but I do want to make sure we introduce all our project partners, because it's the partnership that has really strengthened this project and brought it to where it is today. So if we could share that, the slide kind of listing, we have a lot of folks in the meeting today that we want to be able to have speak to their involvement in the project as well. So as we're getting that partnership slide, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Dave Listovka with ODOT. And Dave, if you could just say a few words about, you know, your agency's involvement and thoughts about Cheers.
Yeah, this is Dave Listovka with the Ohio Department of Transportation's District 12 office. And we're really excited about this project. Our really main focus interest in this is that wave action we've had on I-90. Particularly in the wintertime, we get some icing that happens on I-90. And in addition to all the other great benefits of this project, that would certainly help us with our managing of I-90 traffic in this area. We're really supportive of the project.
Excellent. Thanks so much, Dave. I'll go ahead and pass it to Scudder Mackey with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources.
Yeah, thank you, Kelly. Yeah, my name is Scudder Mackey. I'm the chief at the Office of Coastal Management with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. And ODNR was one of the original sponsors and helped actually visualize this project from the very beginning. As was indicated in one of our earlier slides, you know, we have a strong interest in coastal resiliency along the entire Ohio Lake Erie shoreline and very much promote our promoting nature-based shorelines, softened shorelines where we can to help protect infrastructure, but also increase habitat. And we obviously, being ODNR, have a strong interest in fish and wildlife and habitat creation and protection and enhancement. And this project is going to do that. We also have our H2 Ohio program, which promotes improved water quality in Lake Erie and our tributaries. And this project, within the embayment, is going to help improve water quality. So hopefully, you'll have quiet water. You'll have clean water to recreate in. And finally, one of our major missions for my office is to promote public access to Lake Erie. And that includes reconnecting communities. And that's really what this project is all about, is bringing the residents of Cleveland and allowing them to reconnect to Lake Erie. So in closing, you know, the Department of Natural Resources is a strong supporter of this project, and we are committed to seeing this project through. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Scudder. I'd like to introduce Linda Sternheimer with the Port of Cleveland. Linda?
Morning, everyone. I, you know, harping back to what Director Collier said, I can't say enough about the collaboration and partnership. I think each organization may have their individual goals for their organization, but I think everyone appreciates the big picture of trying to connect people to the waterfront and then, again, using protecting assets from the port. You know, obviously, we have the role of managing dredge and sediment. And I think we can take the lessons learned from Cleveland Lakefront Nature Preserve that we can use sediment and material to make an asset for the community. And what we do know about the sediment we're pulling out of the river is that it's even cleaner than ever. So I think taking the lessons learned from Cleveland Lakefront Nature Preserve will really inform this project.
Thank you, Linda. Yeah, I think that's a really exciting, you know, example that we already have along this portion of the lakefront. So building on that success. And last but not least, I want to introduce Samia Bray. She's a co-facilitator with the Black Environmental Leaders Association. And Bell has joined us for the future phases of the project. They came on board and have made just a greatly appreciated contribution to the partnership. So Samia, let me turn it over to you.
Sure. Thank you, Kelly. Mr. Chairman, members of the review board. My name is Samia Bray, and I'm here representing, as Kelly said, the Black Environmental Leaders Association. We stand as stewards of the natural and built environment through collaboration and partnership. And so together, we are here ringing the bell for environmental and economic justice. This Cheers project, from our perspective, aligns to our priority of advocating as a strong voice speaking out for environmental and economic justice. This project so far has demonstrated an authentic ability to include the voices of all Cleveland residents, centering the voices of those who reside in the adjacent neighborhoods. So Bell believes that this project is a step in support of environmental justice and the potential to heal by providing an accessible and welcoming amenity to all Clevelanders while simultaneously supporting active tourism and economic development activity. So we support this project fully with our time, our talent, and our treasure. And we believe that this project has come at the right time with the right people for the right purpose. And so we are proud to be the newest member of this team and appreciate all that has happened to date.
Thank you so much, Samia. I just want to, again, express gratitude to the partners, to the partnership, to Mary and Vito from our consultant team, to Chris Shefton and Famikos, one of our key stakeholders. And with that, we'll really close down our presentation, and we're just happy to answer any questions or facilitate discussion of any specific items the commission would like to discuss.
Thank you very much for your thorough presentation. As a person that spent most of my life on the water, I appreciate this kind of work. So thank you very much. Commission members, questions?
I don't have a question. It's Lillian. I have a comment, though. There is so much to love about this project, from the process to the many ideas, the many ways to touch the water, the environmental justice piece of this, the neighborhood connectivity. There's so much to love about this. And I think the only comment I'd make is that I hope this is also just a kind of a shining star or a north star for how many other of these large civic projects along the lakefront can get done. And I think that, hopefully, I speak for the whole commission, but I speak for myself, which is that, you know, I think in addition to the planning commission's role and Freddie's role in being a partner in the project, this commission itself, you know, we should stand with you in getting this project done, which, over a long period of time, it's going to take time. So we need to be your partner over the long haul to ensure that this gets done and that there, that what you need and what we can do to support it happens, because it is really important. And this is the kind of example for me of how, on the east side, I think we need more access to touch the water. And so that resonated with me. And I think, I hope there's more of this coming. So I just want to thank you and truly share that as you need us, you should reach out to us and come back and share the progress with us.
Thanks, Lillian. Other commission members?
I move approval.
Then I'll second that.
That was fast, Lillian.
Well, I think, since there was no more comment, but then I'll make the second.
We have Director Collier with his hand raised.
Pardon me?
We have Director Collier with his hand raised.
Freddie, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't want to beat this to death, but I do want to echo what Commissioner Curry said. You know, a lot of the things that we have all collectively, in capital C collectively, been working on are things that are transformative. And I think that, you know, really coming together and everyone pulling in the same direction, understanding what their value add to the bigger picture is really going to be key to how successful we're going to be, not just on these waterfront projects, but as a city. You know, there needs to be a culture shift, and I think that culture shift is starting to happen. You know, I think the shedding of egos and agency, you know, promotion is becoming less. And I think more people are starting to, you know, be concerned about mission more so than anything. And I think, and I'm praying that that is the trajectory that we're on as a community. And I think if we do that, we're better together. And I think we'll be successful, you know, if everybody's truly, you know, rolling in the same direction.
Thanks, Freddie. You know, this is a great project. And I think keeping the residents in this area involved all the way through, because it's obviously going to take a long period of time. And obviously, they're an important piece to this. And keeping the residents involved as part of this group, I think, is really, really important. So we have a motion and second. Any other further discussion? Michael, call the roll, please.
Owen.
Yes.
I'm dominating.
Yes.
Curry.
Yep.
McCray Scott. Dr. McCray Scott?
Yes.
Slide.
Charles?
Yes.
Motion carries. Good luck to all of you.
Thank you.
Lorraine Avenue Plan Update. This is Lorraine Station and Lorraine Variety seeking final approval. Who's here for this? All right, who's here for this one?
I believe we have Chad Dasher and Julian Curtis. I see them both on air.
Good morning, Julian Curtis. Chad, go ahead. Yeah, I'm just going to put it on mute here while Julian presents and so I don't cloud it up here a little bit. So if I, I'll raise my hand when I need to come in.
You got it. Thanks. Good morning, commission. Again, my name is Julian Curtis, City Architecture. I want to thank Rosatello and Chad Dasher from the West Town Re-Develop Corporation for entrusting us with this work. In addition to the design review, Far West Design Review and the Landmarks Commission for their insights in getting us to this point and strengthening this work along the way. This work is really an update to master plan that was done for Lorraine Avenue back in 2008 in combination with Streetscape, a study that was done by City Architecture in 2011. Both of those plans, both of those recommendations focused on the Lorraine Variety Historic District. And in that 10-plus years since both of those works were completed, there's a lot of growth that's happened, a lot has changed, and there's a lot to be now capitalized upon. It's frankly just time for an update to those strategies It's frankly just time for an update to those strategies and then the kind of what's next for this community. Next slide, please. In addition to that, really sharing that same Lorraine Avenue corridor is the Lorraine Station Historic District. So as we were moving through this work, we really tacked on the Lorraine Station Historic District at the opposite end of the corridor and really adopted this as a part of the work as well. And you'll see recommendations that reflect both of these areas. And this really builds off two studies that were performed prior to the plans that were just featured on the previous slide in 2006. And one of those studies, they're starting with the study, the Big Box Centers and Neighborhood Business Districts Impact Analysis and Competitive Strategy, done in '06. This really analyzed the impact of Steel Yard Commons presence to the west side on communities and business districts like the Lorraine Station Historic District and provided an opportunity for gap funding for parking lots, for improvements, retail locations, neighborhood business startups, as well as items in the public realm, so far Streetscape and public art that can be tapped into. It has a fixed time period. Its sunset's in 2020-25. So there's some urgency surrounding tapping into these funds to a greater extent and allowing businesses to know how to move through the process of accessing these funds and continue to restore and enhance the Lorraine Station or Lorraine Corridor. Initially, a neighborhood safety action plan was performed that found what many may suspect in terms of crime. And there's recommendations that came from it, a lot of it being around increased surveillance, provides support for alarm systems. And particularly, I think, the most important piece is that increased lighting. And again, we'll have some recommendations that build off of this work as some of those concerns still remain. But with recent investment, a lot of this is slowly being curbed and improvements continue to come. Next slide, please. So ultimately, these studies that I just previewed informed the shape of our study area that extends from West 121 to West 90th. Next slide, please. I'm going to start with touching on the achievements of what's happened since this work's begun. And just in the last five years since 2016, there's been over $10 million of investment along the Lorraine Avenue Corridor. Places like the Variety Theater that is being, continues to be the icon, iconic moment or piece of the corridors, certainly at that western end, and the interest that is building around a new use for that space to improve storefronts like Almedina Imports to new businesses like Asaz Bakery and Hyatt Dental. Next slide, please. Additionally, improvements in the public realm, mid-block crossings with that hawk element, paved crossings, Streetscape's improvements, benches, receptacles, bike lanes, all those things that really support investment, those infrastructure improvements that support private investment. In addition to that, celebrating public art and art and theater and expression took me folded into that Lorraine Station, excuse me, Lorraine Variety District. In addition to forthcoming improvements, and that the Eastman Library is located in this district and the library's efforts to enhance many of their branches across the system. Eastman Library is one of those branches. So this environment, this community stands to benefit from those updates as well. And lastly, parking, and done so in a tasteful and environmentally friendly and low footprint way. Through Green Infrastructure Grant, there's a parking lot that's been added recently to the district, adjacent to the Variety Theater, done with permeable surfaces because parking is an issue, access to parking, and it does impact business activity when parking is unavailable. Next slide, please. Now jumping to the Lorraine Station Historic District, the eastern end of our study area. There's a unique level, type of investment happening in this area that certainly excites me personally and excites the Community Development Corporation and the community as well. And that there's really a kind of a black-owned business district starting to emerge at this end of the corridor with three new recent businesses that have either relocated, opened anew, or continue to invest in their current storefronts in Lorraine Station Historic District, maintaining that historic character, working closely with the Landmarks Commission and others to make sure that that character is upheld and really create this entrepreneurial spirit in a neighborhood that is quite diverse, quite expressive, and should be celebrated for that. Next slide, please. So with this, with those achievements outlined in the study described, we've really grouped our recommendations into four buckets, the Variety Theater, Eastman Library, West Town, Cleveland Christian Home, the West Town Square, and lastly, the Lorraine Station Historic District. And we'll touch on kind of the quick highlights of those recommendations here next. Next slide, please. So A, starting with that Lorraine Station, excuse me, the Variety Theater as a recommendation, as interest builds and deals slowly put together for a new occupant. There's a local example that we pointed to to lean on that has maintained its use as a theater but adapted into a multi-use facility in the Agora Theater in Midtown. And in addition, kind of layered with this is really the long-term consideration of the pursuit of a CIT or Special Improvement District to support maintenance. One of the big conversations that has come up, and I mean by maintenance, I mean maintenance within the corridor along the district, is that with these new benches, with these new features on the Streetscape, there's a challenge to maintain them. Although they're great features, there is a challenge to maintain this. How do you support that? Something like a CIT could help support maintaining that, improving that, and continue to enhance that character. B is the Eastman Library. So Eastman Library, again, set to improve their building on the interior. And but how does that now improved presence meet the Streetscape, meet the exterior? Right now, as you can see, the building is very inward, if you will, lots of brick, not a lot of light or transparency. It remains to be seen what those final designs will be. However, what they have done a very successful job of is forming art installations along with the building and the programming at the library. So is there a way to tie in kind of permanent art installations into the Streetscape with things like creatively designed benches and seating areas that could, again, soften that experience, improve that connection between the library and the Streetscape and leverage really the investment that's happening just to the west of it at the Variety Theater and pull that down the street? Now, kind of rounding the clock going counterclockwise, we'd see that West Town Square, the Cleveland Christian Home, has a much different feel to the majority of the district. And that, if you can imagine, if you've been through that space, those buildings are set quite far back from the road in comparison to the buildings from about West 20, West 21st to West 117. Is there a way to kind of tighten that fabric a bit using natural features, using art, using expression to tighten that feeling, improve the pedestrian experience or the non-vehicular movers and travelers in that area? And we believe that creating a buffer is a solution, but certainly not, maybe not at as high a priority as the other recommendations that we have shared and will share. Next slide, please. And as we shift down the street, moving east to the Lorraine Station Historic District, this is really where some of the major thoroughfares and major corridors on the west side all really collide at one spot from Lorraine Avenue, Denison Avenue, and West Boulevard. And it really creates the opportunity where a number of travelers and activity happens to make a statement about the district and about this community. Next slide, please. So the bold statement that we've arrived at with the CDC is this gateway arch piece, right, that celebrates Lorraine Station Historic District, what it's meant to the economic history of the city of Cleveland. Really create this artifact and this moment of arrival for this portion of the community that elevates its presence and celebrates its significance. So the archway now only features certainly the script or lettering of where a traveler is, where user is. But on those pillars can be incorporated historic facts and facts about the Lorraine Station Historic District, what it's meant to the community, and really create something memorable in this neighborhood. Again, we view this as maybe a last step in a layered approach to wayfinding and Streetscape improvement here. So things like banner program or smaller scale items are certainly kind of an incremental step to this. And that TIF financing to the Steel Yard, TIF legislation allows something like this to happen, or funds that could be tapped into to support the development of this type of installation. Next slide, please. Really, our last area of focus that we spent time with the CDC on is addressing the need of affordable housing in the community. The West Town area, surface area, has the benefit of really having really intact blocks for the most part and a number of well-maintained homes. But it's not without challenge. There are folks in this community that are living within poverty, that are struggling to find affordable housing, that would like to move into the community and frankly can't afford to. So within a number of recommendations we pursued, the number one recommendation we arrived at that is most applicable to this community, we believe, is prioritizing single-family home infill development on select vacant land bank lots, particularly adjacent to the Lorraine Station Historic District. And we'll tell you why that is. Next slide, please. So in the Lorraine Station Historic District is where census data has demonstrated that the highest concentration of poverty is located. Again, you can see from the graphic at the top, this is incredibly diverse place, and poverty is not immune, is certainly not immune to any race or color. And it exists in this area that the district occupies. Not ironically, there are a number of land bank lots available in this area, but not to the extent or in a collection where something large, like a multifamily complex or series of townhomes could necessarily be developed. It's sporadic, but that aligns with really the makeup of the neighborhood of predominantly single-family homes and the typology that's present today. So again, we feel that with the support of experienced developers, both locally and non, West Town can engross relationship with the land bank, begin to think about how they can insert themselves into the development space. And there's opportunity for infill development to happen and to occur in an area that needs it most in their service area. Next slide, please. In closing, I was going to touch on a few of the next steps the CDC has asked to prioritize moving forward. Ultimately, what's next for the Variety Theater Historic District? And there's conversations continue and excitement builds. So while that CIT is something that's certainly due down the road, that remains a primary focus of the CDC. Something that's more, perhaps more near term, is that the Eastman Library branch renovation. So again, how can that be leveraged in the public realm to support continued outdoor dining, signage, public parking, neighborhood branding? How do you leverage that improvement to pull that development out into the street for all users to benefit? As I mentioned, the Steel TIF year legislation sunsets in 2026, four or five years from now. What can the CDC do in these last five years to ensure that businesses are aware of it, have support accessing those dollars? And they themselves had access to those dollars to enhance the public realm through branding and signage and ultimately the pursuit of an RFP to select the fabricator to design, whether it's that gateway arts element or some piece for the Lorraine Station Historic District. Additionally, as it relates to safety, in that same area of the Lorraine Station Historic District, CDC will survey those area merchants, determine what needs they have for affordable security systems, seek to address the challenges that remain on Henley Court. That runs parallel to Lorraine Avenue in the district. And again, the continued investment there and support for those businesses is a natural crime deterrent. But there are mechanisms that can be put in place and dollars available to support protecting those businesses and protecting that community and decreasing crime. And lastly, really the blanket that falls overall, this is prioritizing maintaining the historic fabric of the district, ensuring that business owners and future business owners are aware of the standards of operating within a historic district or provide that guidance that's needed to maintain those buildings appropriately and move through the process and approvals of enhancing your business, if you so choose, or maintaining your business as is or your property as is, to ensure that you are aligning with the standard of the district. Next slide, please. So in closing, we're appreciative of the opportunity to collaborate on this project, but we believe strongly in what West Town has done and continues to do in the neighborhood. And we, again, appreciative of your time today. Chad, anything in closing?
Nah, Julian, you guys did a great job on this. Just like when you did our Streetscape plan, you worked very well with us. And I think we really hit the points that we needed to hit here and build off of the plan that was initially done in 2008 with West Town and city planning. I'm here for any questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Commission members?
I move approval and just in doing so say that I really think Lorraine Station is one of the lesser-known but highest potential historic districts in the city. It's got great urban fabric, it's had limited demolition, and I'm really eager to see this part of the west side, you know, really gain the recognition that it's owed. So I'm really excited to see this as someone who drives through often.
Nice. Yeah, councilman, if you ever want to come down, I'd be glad to show you some of the things that have already happened down here. And yeah, just in the last couple of years, there's been a lot of new businesses, a lot of renovation going on. It's, I agree, it's pretty exciting.
This is Lillian. I agree. Actually, my comment was going to be to Julian was that, that, and I guess to the councilman is that I'm not as familiar with the Lorraine Station Historic District. I kind of know where it is when I'm over there, but I wasn't really aware of it as it was presented today. So I might suggest a little flipping of something you said, which was the idea that some of the smaller Streetscape improvements might happen first and then something as kind of sort of like bold as this idea of an archway would come second. And I might argue that I would do that, the arch first, or the idea of this kind of really putting a stake in the ground of this district first, because I think it'll help you raise the dollars and the energy around the overall vision easier. Now, normally, I wouldn't say this, but in this instance, I would. Because I think sometimes for something like this, it's expensive, but it's not radically expensive. And I think there may be sources to do something like this gateway experience that would really just galvanize and bring presence to this for even people who aren't as aware of it instantly. But I say this with great love for this plan and support. I just, I think it's a great idea. And when there isn't as much awareness as the councilman mentioned, then maybe you need something like this to also spark the investment to follow. So that's it. But, and if there are no other comments from my colleagues, I will move approval.
Well, I think we have a motion from Charles, so you would second that.
I'm sorry, yep.
I just had one question. In the 80s, I think there was an opening for a shopping district. I forget what was in there originally. It might have been a grocery store and there's a McDonald's. It's off of Lorraine, but was there any discussion about that area as part of your plan? Or is that just not included? I can't remember the cross street it's near, but it's had a lot of changes over the last several decades. And I just wondered if there's any discussion about that and how it can be more incorporated into the neighborhood.
The one you're talking about is the West Town Square. That's kind of right in the middle of the planning area on the map. And that's the one, because that's like the shopping center that has the McDonald's and a couple of the other fast food.
Right.
Places, which is pretty good. The occupancy is very good back there. You rarely see vacant storefronts. Yeah, but that is included, you know, if that's the one. Yeah, that is included. It isn't. You know, if that's the one you're talking about, that is included in this plan.
Yeah, that was the one. I haven't driven by it recently, so haven't been able to really look at the occupancy rate. But glad it's part of the plan and that it's.
That that shopping plaza has pretty good ownership, tends to be very well kept, very well landscaped, very well. You know, they 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 kind of really take care of the area there. A couple of years ago, we had some issues with them not having dumpsters and dumpster enclosures and they went and put all those on. They've been pretty good partners so far. Don't have to really do much back there because it's it's pretty nice.
Great. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So what's ever happened with the Rite Aid building? They put the windows in, Donna had them put the windows in. You know, you have the Rite Aid and then they acquired this building right on Lorraine.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, the Guardian Trust Building?
Yeah, whatever happened with that.
That's kind of always been a kind of a problem with, you know, here with the people that that the ownership. I have brought in so many businesses to them over the years. And for some reason, they always come up with, they always find a way to get to know. Whether it's a dental office, whether it's like like a food court. Those are just the two that just pop right out of my head. It's, you know. What I really think that what they really wanted to do long term is I think they were looking for a curb cut on Lorraine. Right now, they only have one on one hundred and seventeenth and they have one on Geraldine. But we were never going to let that happen. That's too wonderful looking of a building. But from what I understand now is someone is is in a negotiation, that's not with that ownership group to purchase that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Oh, that's the I could speak for hours on the Guardian Trust Building.
Yeah, I I know quite a bit about it. I've been through it a number of times.
Yeah.
Michael, call the roll, please.
Owen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray, Scott.
Yes.
But.
Yes.
Well, Shankaris, good luck to you.
All right. Thank you very much. Thanks for having us today.
Thank you, Commissioner. Take care.
Okay, the next is Southeast Design Review Entrada at Wood Wood Hill Heights, new construction. And this is for final approval. This is at two seven two zero M L K Drive. Who's here for this one? You have Danny.
Looks like we have Andrew Gottlieb.
Yeah, and Andrew Gottlieb is on as well. He might come either.
Andrew and Dan, I'm going to have to swear you in. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury? And the correct answer is I do with your name.
I do, Danny Glimmer. Andrew. I guess Andrew's having some technical difficulties.
Hey Danny, it's Gary Niola. I'm I'm on as well. Andrew's coming on, just let you know.
Yep, he's on.
I apologize that for that. I today I'm sitting on a panel here at Cleveland State, talking about housing and zoning symposium in that county. So I apologize for that. But I want to.
I'm going to have to swear you in. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
So first off, I want to thank the Design Review here for Southeast for for taking the time here to to help us with the the project of Entrada at Woodland Heights as we are now seeking final approval. I wanted to walk through the project one more time and just go through some of the changes that we we made to to the response of the community and answer any questions that you might have as we move forward here with hopefully getting final approval here on this project, which we are very excited about here among with our partners. So with that, if we can go to the next slide, I'd appreciate it. One more. One more. As you can see, this is the this hasn't changed. This is a context to to the site. We are building on the former Saint Luke's Hospital. Parking lots in the back here with proximity to Larchmere, Buckeye, Shaker Square and University Circle as well as Fairfax and Woodland Hills. We can go to the next slide. This is the context of the current street of East one hundred and fourteenth. Showing the existing housing stock. Next slide, please. This is the context of the former hospital and current site conditions. Next slide, please. This is the context of East one hundred and twelve. You can see the housing that was established a few years ago here by Cleveland Housing Network and some more existing housing stock. Next slide, please. These are the elevations of of the current plan. If you go to the next slide, we'll show the floor plans as well as the renderings. So the the this product type, as some of you are familiar with, is a a net zero ready home. We have ten inch walls that we are building using high quality materials of standing seam roofing material, metal roofing, as well as LP smart side. The floor plan here is showing a first floor mat, a first floor bedroom for people to age in place behind the kitchen. A living room and then we have three baths, three bedrooms and a rooftop deck over the garage. Please throw the next. To address some of the concerns of Southeast Design Review, we have shown them that we have created changes to the partitions between the units with a more attractive look that creates some privacy. We adjusted the roof per their request and added lighting to show what the home would look like at night. This is a rendering of of those changes as well as showing it in a dusk format. Next, next slide. We are showing the same, just in different colors here for context, so that it's not all uniform. Next slide. And then this is the renderings of the product that we anticipate to build in the day, showing a rendering.
It also shows the locations of the gutters, which is one was one of the requests between schematic and final for Southeast Design Review. They wanted to see the placement of the gutters. As you can see, they're centrally located on the left in black on the darker versions and in white on the white version.
Do you go back to the white version real quick? I just want to see the white version. Okay. I just wanted to see it. Did you just say though that the the on the white version, the gutters and the window frames would be lighter or they'd stay black?
The the gutter will be white. If you see in the central, the gutter is coming white.
Spout, you mean? I can see it.
Yeah, correct.
Correct.
And if you can see the one on the the gray house on the right, those are in black.
I got it. Okay.
You can go to the next slide. This is a great site plan. This is showing just the four different colors that we plan to offer these homes in while mixing them within the neighborhood so that it is not so institutional. And mixing the variety of the of 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 the colors within the neighborhood. If you could go to the next slide. This is the site plan apparently as we're showing. And if you go to the next slide, you start seeing our landscaping. Working with Southeast Design Review, we have really, really appreciated the efforts of you know, the concerns of what they what they hope to achieve out of and of 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 this project as well as what we hope to achieve and aligning with that. We are anticipating and hoping to plant trees. We are currently working on that as well as we're we're working with a within within the fact that we are trying to do a market rate home. And with high quality materials, we are we are showing minimal landscaping. However, we we do have trees on the corners to show screening. And more importantly, those trees will hopefully add to the east side tree canopy. Next slide, please. This is just showing, you know, exactly what that what that will will do from the house to the street. Go to the next slide, please. There was concerns on the wind impact for LP smart side. Here, we we decided to include some of that information on how well the warranty is as well as how it is really a great product against wind driven and flying debris. You know, this is the type of product that you're not going to see siding fly off in a windstorm. Hence, I know sometimes in Cleveland, we do have those issues, especially with vinyl. Built on market rate product, we strive to not use those products, especially in an energy and efficient home and and building something of quality. So that's why we are using LP smart side as a as a product, fairly product for for this project. Next slide, please. Excellent. This is just showing the weather and strong LP smart side. You can keep going. The colors that we plant on 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 building is we've shown in the rendering. This is just a synopsis of that. If you keep going, please. Roofing material will be a metal standing seam as as so or like product. One more slide. For windows, we are going to be using energy efficient windows. Next thing, please.
All right.
So lastly, the last thing I want to address and and there's been some questions about this in the community and I just wanted to state this. You know, our our project is called Entrada at Woodland Heights. Some people have asked us why is it called Entrada at Woodland Heights? If you look at a Sanborn bathroom in nineteen twenties, nineteen thirties, the direct location behind the hospital, those subdivisions in the nineteen twenties Sanborn maps are showing that the name was called Woodland Heights. So we are paying homage to that by bringing back that name in the historical context of what Cleveland neighborhoods are showing historically.
Thank you. Blaine, I see you on. Did you have something you wanted to say?
Just love the project. I think that it's something that I'm very supportive of. We had a community meeting where they actually presented to the community and some members of the community was like, how can I sign up to buy one of those? So it's a very popular product in our community. I'm glad that they brought up about the name Entrada. It was brought to my attention after doing some research about the the name. I do like Woodland Heights, but if if at all possible, Entrada means, you know, going into unknown territory or something like that. And you know, I think we don't want to go into a neighborhood where we're going to make this group part of the community with that kind of you know, name hanging over its head. So but the project and the team has been great and I really look forward to working with them to making them a part of this community.
Thank you, Cosma. Mission members.
This is Lillian. Last time you were here, I spoke about how much I love the product and especially the accessibility. So I won't repeat that, although, you know, I I think the the beauty, I'll say it again, in a model that is accessible, but doesn't send a message to the community. It's for that can be housing for people with disabilities is extraordinary. So I think it it raises the bar. I said that last time, so I won't repeat it. But I didn't want to make my comment about the name. I had not heard there was any controversy, but when I saw your first your first slide, it was going to be a question I was going to ask. So the the comment I'll make about that, the name and and is that is that I think it's really important. And I so I think like the councilman said, I think you should revisit it. To be honest, and I don't know if that's possible, but I really do think you should revisit it. I don't love when subdivisions in general, especially in suburbs come up with names. And I know this has some historical reference and I don't know where Entrada came from. But I know you want to have an identity, but I think you also want this to become part of the community. So it doesn't sit right with me for some reason. So I just wanted to say that. I love everything about this project. I just hope you guys will take a little time to work with the community on the name.
Thanks, Lillian. Other commission members? Can I get a motion?
I move approval, Downing.
I second McCray, Scott.
I agree with Lillian on the name.
So maybe before we vote, could I ask what where you guys are on that? And are you open to I mean, open to kind of working a little more on that?
Yeah, we're happy to revisit the name. Just just to give you the context of the name. Entrada actually means entrance, as in like welcome home, kind of your new home. There's been a few the few developments around the nation with the name Entrada. The thought process was, you know, one of our goals here was to really elevate the quality of housing stock, but make it accessible from a price point to everyone who's in the neighborhood now. And we've self financed this so we could keep the price point lower without having an obligation to maximize returns. And so we could offer this at a at a discounted price to something of this quality, you know, as being sold at anywhere else would be in the threes at at minimum. So the idea was, you know, this will help you build equity and wealth, you know, in your life by taking home ownership here. And so it was kind of an entrance into a next level and an entrance, you know, a kind of reintroduction of the entrance of this neighborhood as you cross from Larchmere into this neighborhood. Entrada was more of a welcoming name. That was the idea of Entrada. The Woodland Heights piece was just from the historical map. It was trying to be, you know, honoring the the history, but we're certainly not married to the name. That that's certainly not the most important part of this project.
Okay.
And just to add to that, you know, we are always striving to work with the community and that's what makes our partnership between our companies very well is we both have that same mission to really work with the community.
Well, I don't want to hold you up. So I'd ask Diane, since she made the motion, if she'd be willing to say that you guys would just come back to staff when you have that resolved. And and what I mean by that is that also I'm sure you do want some signage out here eventually for the development. So but I don't think it needs to come to us if you can work it out with staff, if that's okay. And I don't know the councilman if that's okay, but if they can come back to the city planning staff when they've thought that through a little bit versus having to come back here. Are you?
Absolutely, Commissioner Curry. I totally agree and and I have a great working relationship with these gentlemen and you know, I'm sure we'll be able to come up with something that the community and everybody else seems feasible. I just hate just along with your comments and Ms. Downing's comments, I just hate to have a great project like this, have something even remotely hanging over his head because it's too great of a project for that. Okay?
Totally agree. Extraordinary on every level. So this we should get this right is all we should do because I think we want to also use this as the model. So.
Yeah, so I'll agree to that amendment that Lillian has suggested and also agree that this is a wonderful project. Yeah, so I'll agree to that amendment um that Lillian has suggested and also agree that this is a wonderful project.
Um, we, we had a second on that, I think, but I can't remember who.
No, did someone second it? Oh, McCriss got it.
Yes, I did.
Yep, so we have a motion, a second, further discussion. I just want to say it's a beautiful project. Uh, my mom was a nurse at St. Luke's Hospital.
Probably born there.
Yeah, there you go. So you're connected.
I do, I do.
Yeah, the nurses are starting to dwindle though. Um, it's the, the nurses that were there, my mom's kind of like the last grouping of them. So, um, anyhow, uh, Michael call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Motion carries. Good luck and uh Blaine, good luck in coming up with a new name.
Thank you very much.
Alright, the next is uh Lincoln Heights Town Homes New Construction Seeking Final Approval. This is at uh two, three, three, nine West Seventeenth Street. Who's here for this one?
This is uh Larissa Burley, project architect and senior associate at Bielaski Cleveland. And I'm joined by Josh Rosen of Sustainable Community Associates and my colleague David Cron of Bielaski.
Okay, great. So I'm going to have to swear you're all in and if you could just state your name and I do, that'd be great. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
I do, Larissa Burley.
I do, David Cron.
Uh-oh, I think Josh is going to lie.
I, I do Josh Rosen. Sorry, I was on mute.
Hey Josh, nice to see you.
Good to see you too.
Alright, so who's going to kick this one off?
Okay, well, uh, I'll do that. So good morning, everyone. Um, I know we've brought this to you previously for a schematic design review, but just to refresh everyone's memory. Um, we are looking at the West Seventeenth Town Homes, which are directly east of the Fairmont Creamery, directly north of the Lincoln Building. Um, so we've worked on these projects previously with uh Sustainable Community Associates. And um, so it's, it's a bit of a campus uh that we're considering when we look at these designs. Next slide. Um, these are some of the uh projects we've worked on with Josh, Naomi and Ben. Um, so just to reorient uh the Fairmont Creamery down to the left and the Lincoln Building, which is currently under construction. Next slide.
I just want to congratulate you on the tap and I hear that won an award last night. Good job.
Thank you, thank you. Um, so this is uh, this is our site. Um, it's important to note that originally it was uh thought of to be a parking lot. Um, so the owners uh wanted to explore other ways of actually filling this hole and providing um some community activity. Next slide. This is uh the Fairmont Creamery directly to the west and the residential homes that would be directly to the south of the site. Next. And also some uh the adjacent property to the north and nearby homes along Scranton. So you'll see the typical A-frame roof constructions, the porches. Um, and so we, we tried to draw some context from the existing conditions. Next. Again, this is our site. Uh, currently uh used informally to park some cars, was thought of as a parking lot. But Sustainable Community Associates came to us and said they had a few goals uh with this site. One was to fill this void with some residential and community amenity. The other was to look at West Seventeenth Street and Paraffin Avenue and make them more pedestrian friendly and user friendly for um some of the commercial services, including the gym. Um, in the Fairmont Creamery. Next slide. The roads are not in the best condition and you'll see that there are no sidewalks on the east side of West Seventeenth Street. Um, there were sidewalks added on the west side of West Seventeenth Street as part of the Fairmont Creamery um project. But uh we are looking to make this um more pedestrian friendly and add some side street parking um to add some activity to it. Next slide. When we were looking at filling this site with townhomes, originally uh there were a series of townhomes facing West Seventeenth Street. With some uh private areas um to the east along West uh Eighteenth Place. But SCA was really intent on providing a more open and community feeling space. Um, for the townhomes. And so what we decided to do was create a, a semi-private um parkwalk. That would be at the center of the townhomes and open that space um to be more of a community amenity. Next slide. Um, so this is zooming into the site. We are currently showing um eleven parking spaces, one um plus for each of the townhomes. So there are a series of ten townhomes and eleven spaces and we are required to have one per townhome. Um, I will note that the townhomes are broken up into two separate units with a um base entry floor. And then another tenant that would be on the second and third floor. Next. We're working with DeRue Landscape Architecture on this uh parkwalk. And so what it's meant to be is a terraced landscape that provides some privacy. Um, to the tenants of the townhomes, but also gives pocket places to sit and relax and um screening. We're looking at using mostly planting elements um in order to provide some of those areas. Next slide. These are uh all roughly twenty foot by forty foot long units. Um, we are maintaining all of our um setbacks that are currently required and as I had mentioned, um maintaining our required parking spaces. Next slide. Here's a uh, here are the layouts of the typical units. We have the ground floor unit. Uh, which would have a living room at front with a kitchen, bathroom and bedroom. And then the set of stairs to the right would actually be the private entry to the upper unit. Uh, which has a bedroom on the second floor, but then also a bedroom and a bonus room on the third floor with a walkout patio um on the third floor. Next slide. The materials we're looking at using at the ground floor would be kind of a soft terracotta like masonry. And uh we figure there is a lot of uh industrial gray and, and some dark colors in the surrounding area, but. You know, we, we want to remind ourselves that this is a residential building and we want it to feel really warm and soft and inviting. Um, and uh so we're looking at some lighter palette materials. So this would be the material we'd look at for the ground floor. Next slide. For the second, third floor skin as well as the roof, uh we'd be looking at bronze metal cladding. And we're currently using some charcoal metal cladding across the street at the Lincoln, um but wanted to select something that had a little more warmth to it. Um, to go with the um rosy brick. Next slide. The front facade of the buildings, we're looking to infill with another material that would be warmer in tone, so um warmer in feel. But a little cooler in tone. So we're looking at some pre-weathered cedar that would be se- um sealed. And um. Next slide. This would be uh an elevation depiction of the um front facade of each of the townhomes. So um. You know, all the materials together, the brick at the base, um the frame of the metal wrap and then the wood infill. Next slide. This would be the typical rear of each of the townhomes. So still masonry at the first floor, metal facade at the second. And then where the um patios, roof patios are, we would have an inset of the uh wood material. Next slide. The slide on the left shows the view from West Seventeenth. And we felt we needed to treat this as um another primary entry to uh. The building in a way, our primary facade, excuse me. So we wanted to make sure that there are ample windows at the first floor, at the ground floor. And you know, that the skin and the balcony were appropriately expressed. Um, we are folding the, the screen of the, I guess not the screen, but the. Frame of the metal um cladding in so that the building pivots or tilts a little bit toward the main entry point. Along West Seventeenth Street and, and showcases uh the warm wood material as well. The elevation on the right shows the elevation from West Eighteenth Place. So here, this is where um residents along West Eighteenth Place have a lot of their trash um bins located. Um, this is also where we would be parking the cars facing the first floor of the building. Um, so the intent was to provide a little bit more privacy in this area. Next slide. Uh, this is just to show percentage of glazing. We wanted to make sure that we were meeting the requirement. So percentage of glazing at the um front facade. Uh, is forty-six percent. Next slide. And here we wanted to show ample amount of glazing um along West Seventeenth Street. So we are achieving greater than twenty-five percent um on this one. Next slide. This is a bird's eye view of um the project. We're looking at expressing the balconies slightly different from the north units than we would the south units. Um, the north units would uh, you know, get some softer sun and, and not need to be shielded so much from the southern light. So we've expressed and opened those balconies more. The southern balconies, we're looking at providing additional screening, um just to prevent some of the harsh south sun from getting into the units. Next slide. This is uh an image of uh the view from inside of um the parkwalk. And we really wanted to convey that it would be a terraced landscape. It would be a special place. Um, we wanted to keep it relatively intimate in that, you know, we don't want to invite uh motorcyclists and, and, and things from, from traveling down this path. Um, but we do want to make it wide enough and open enough to feel like you're invited to walk through it. So the minimum pinch points that we're keeping this sidewalk at are five feet wide. And um then it kind of uh expands and um in other areas to provide places for seating. So um Jamie Schwartzberg of DeRue is working with us to provide um some integrally lit um seating areas. We will look at providing bollards as well. We are not um interested in pole lights. Um, but we, we do foresee that in addition to the wall sconces at each entry of um each unit, that there would be some bollards within. The um plant scape as well as the lit seating components. I'm, and I believe that is, oh, the next slide will show you the view from uh West Seventeenth. And uh, so this would be relatively the entry experience um from the main walkway. We are looking at adding a um two-foot landscape buffer along the west edge of the masonry wall. So right now. It does look like the sidewalk is meeting the masonry directly. Um, but we're actually. Uh, accounting for a two-foot space where we can have some plants to soften that threshold. And I believe that's it. I'm happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you so much. Uh, commission members?
Um, this is me. So great project. Um, I would say uh for me, this is an extraordinary piece of design. Um, I think it. Um, really moves the bar um on the design of townhomes. I feel like um, uh, and I'm joking, but. There should be a sign on the side of this that says, when we said muse, this is what we meant. Um, so not car.
This is a muse.
Like, could you say that? For me, could you have like a quote that says, this is a muse quoted by me? And I'd like it attached to the side of it. I'm just kidding. Um, but um, but I just want to commend you. I mean, uh, not just the design is, is wonderful and the infill. And the public space and the thinking, but so it's a compliment both to Bielaski, I think, for um kind of uh, kind of moving forward. The quality of design around um townhomes. And then obviously to Sustainable Communities, who's a, it takes a client to, who wants to build something like this. So. Uh, pretty extraordinary um and exciting and um, and I think will push the bar farther for others on the design front. So thank you and um. As I said, Freddie, poster child for muse. You should put it on the front of the brochure of what is a muse. Thank you.
But Lillian, where do the cars go if that's a muse?
Exactly. They don't go there. That's not where they're supposed to go. They're not supposed to go there. I'm just kidding.
Motorcycle down there. What's going on? You know, I would say eh to Josh, you know, you guys have had a history of doing beautiful projects. So. Uh, Lillian's exactly right. You know, you, it's really about the owner because the owner kind of takes the lead in what they're willing to do.
Thank you both for your kind words. We appreciate it.
So any other commission members want to weigh in?
It's a great project and I'll move approval Downing.
I'll second. You can put my quote in the sidewalk too, as you want. It doesn't have to be in the building, but if it could be in the sidewalk, like, you know, I'm just kidding. I second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, further discussion. Michael, call the roll.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Like.
Yes.
Um, I have one last comment. So I just want to say one last thing. Um, there is something about the architecture. I didn't want to say it in my motion or anything, but that um. In which I like, it reads like, um, I don't know if it was like uni- unitarian universalism, like this idea of like, what is the future place where all is welcome? So. Uh, it reads to me as like very welcoming, which I love. I don't know if that makes sense to anyone. I just wanted to say it.
It does, thank you.
Thanks very much. Thanks. No, we, we definitely wanted this to feel welcoming. So much appreciated.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks everyone.
Have a great weekend. Okay, here we are to uh Near West Design Review Metro Health. Um, garage uh new construction seeking schematic approval. And this is at twenty-five hundred uh Metro Health Drive. Who's here for this one?
Jeff Hendrickson with Desmond.
Anyone else joining you, Jeff?
Uh, there is a few people from uh Metro Health or one person from Metro Health, Robin Holmes.
Uh, so if you plan on speaking, um, I'm going to swear you in and the right answer is I do with your name.
Okay.
You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
I do.
I do.
And your names, please.
Jeff Hendrickson.
Robin Holmes and Walter Jones is on the um call as well. I'm not sure if he's.
Hey, Robin.
Hi, David.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, uh, as I said, my name's Jeff Hendrickson with Desmond. Uh, we are the architect, engineer and parking consultant. Um, on the design build team of Donley's Desmond uh for this Metro Health Apex Patient and Visitor Parking Garage that we're discussing today. Uh, we're also working very closely with the Metro Health and Turner Perspective CBLH team. Um, this is really uh one portion of a master plan that's been, that Metro Health has been working on for several years, uh that you've probably seen in front of you. Um, this is really a discussion on the parking garage, which is something that has been mentioned in the past, but wasn't um. Formally out there and hadn't been really presented in terms of its details, where it's located, what size it is. So the goal of this presentation is just to provide a more detailed look at the garage itself. And this garage will serve uh both the Glik Center Inpatient Tower as well as the adjacent uh Apex Outpatient Administrative Services Building. Um, and so it's really for uh visitors and patients. And so it's really for visitors and patients only. The garage is going to be constructed using cast-in-place post-tension structural system. The structure is approximately five levels high, which is four supported concrete levels, has a footprint of about one hundred eighty-two feet by two hundred ninety-seven feet and about two hundred seventy-five thousand square feet of total area with eight hundred seventy-eight parking spaces. It's a, what we call a three-bay-wide parking structure and has ninety-degree parking, two-way traffic throughout. And all the parking stalls will be standard nine-foot by eighteen-foot spaces. No compact spaces are anticipated in the project at all. The overall height of the garage will not exceed, will be quite, you know, quite a bit below seventy-five feet. It's going to be about forty-nine feet above grade on one side and about sixty-four feet above grade at its highest point. You could move to the next slide. These are general perspectives, bird's eye views, and also perspectives from the street of the parking garage and its relationship to both the Apex and Glick Center buildings. Next slide. This is site plan, which shows a general arrangement of the garage within the site. It abuts View Road. Sort of calling that View Road is sort of south of the garage in terms of this. North isn't, kind of in a weird configuration. But the major vehicular entry will happen over, it's on this photograph, kind of towards the north edge or east edge. That will be an entrance only for vehicles. Exits will occur on the, I'll call it the south side, at the southeast edge, which will be for exits of all vehicles. There's also pedestrian entrances and exits. There's a main stair elevator tower on the northwest corner, which will serve the Apex Building, so direct connection to Apex and then through Apex into the Glick Center. There's also just an emergency egress there on the northeast corner, which kind of faces the Glick Center. Next slide. So this is just what we're calling the grade level parking area. And it's kind of a lower level in a sense because View Road goes up as you go from the east, what I'm calling Plan East to Plan West. So vehicles will enter on this, this level and go up a ramp. There's also utility rooms, storage rooms, electrical plumbing, or electrical and plumbing rooms on this, this lower kind of area. Next slide. As you go up the ramp, there's, the vehicular exit is over towards the southwest corner. You turn up, go Plan North. If you want to circulate further up, you take a right and then you can circulate up the ramp. This area, this, what we're considering a flat area, has a very small slope of like one and a half to two percent, which basically allows for the grade changes on the site, also creates ramping where the major ramping occurs, which is the south edge, at less than five percent. Next slide. Yeah. So this is a typical level, which has again ninety-degree two-way parking throughout. Shows the stair elevator tower on the northwest side, the exit stair on the southeast side. Next slide. Another typical level, same as the level before. We're putting handicap spaces throughout on all levels except for the roof so that there's even distribution and close proximity to the stair elevator towers. Next slide. Again, typical level. Next slide. And this is the roof level. The roof level is cut back from View Road, partly to meet the car count requirement, but also to kind of step back that elevation. So what you see from View Road is just a single level, which is it's a sloped level, but you see one facade. It doesn't step up on the east side. Slide. These are the typical elevations of the north and south. The one on top is where the entrances to the garage and also the egress for the garage for vehicles. And it shows, you can see on the upper right side of the top elevation, there's a spandrel that comes across. That's actually set back sixty feet. So what you really see is sort of the slope of the level below that and then going up to the top level that's on the left side of the page. The other elevation is a view from Glick to the garage itself, which shows the stair tower and the elevator tower. Next slide. Near the east and west elevations, the top one is the one that faces kind of Glick, sort of perpendicular to View Road. It shows a change in elevation along the southeast, southeast side because of the site topography. And behind that in the triangle is kind of the storage, elevate, electrical rooms and plumbing rooms. And then the bottom elevation is the west elevation that shows the stair elevator tower that faces Apex. Next slide. These are just typical longitudinal, landit, landit, two, landit, cross-sections of the garage, showing that there will be, essentially there'll be open beams. There'll be beams every twenty-seven feet that are cast in place post-tension. It makes the garage feel pretty open on the inside, eleven foot four floor to floor, again to create a more open structure and also allow, you know, inaccessible spaces throughout. The long cross-section is showing the section between the ramp and the flat, sort of some, the flat base. We'll have barrier cable again to openness and clear views across the entire garage for safety and security. Next slide. That's it. That's all I have. I don't know if anybody else from the team has anything to say. I'd like to open up for questions and answers.
Looks like we have Director Collier with his hand raised, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Jeff, how are you, man? Hey, just one quick question. The hospital is, as it's being developed, it's looking really nice. I live in that area. Around seventy-one, when you're driving along seventy-one, you can see the hospital. It was extremely visible. And this garage facility, I'm wondering, although it's on the backside of the hospital and it's kind of tucked away, can you see it from seventy-one? Because that backside of the hospital is relatively visible when you're coming around seventy-one. So this hospital campus has a significant profile for individuals that are moving into and out of the city. So I'm just wondering, with this garage facility, will it be tucked behind the tree line or will it rise above the tree line?
Yeah, I actually drove it. That was a conservative, the Near West Committee as well. And we drove it kind of after the presentation last time. As you're coming, I don't know if it's, assume it's kind of north-west or as you're coming west on seventy-one at that point, there's quite an embankment with trees on it. And I think, I think there's a possibility in the winter you may see it, in the summer you may not. You have to look pretty quickly to the right as you're driving. So you'd be a very distracted view as well. If you're coming in the other direction, the other side, you probably would see it a little bit more, I think, along that elevation. Again, if you're, if you're looking for it.
Right. The reason I was asking is because it just speaks to the notion of skinning, if it was possible, depending on the view. I mean, if it's tucked away and you can't really see it, then, you know, the expense isn't obviously worth that. However, given the, the approach and the, the design, it calls a lot of attention to the campus because it's a really contemporary design. And if you can see it from the highway, it may be beneficial to add some skin to that, that portion of the garage. But just something to consider. If it's not significant, then it's not significant.
And I think Robin and Walter, you guys could confirm, we are looking at that.
Sure. Jeff, I can respond. Metro Health was not able to release the information before our stakeholders meeting, but we are excited to let everyone know that we do have a plan to skin the garage and to also provide cladding on some of the other buildings so that we have a seamless campus moving forward.
That's great.
Thank you, Robin.
You're welcome.
Commission members?
Just to clarify, is this for?
Schematic.
Schematic, okay. So I'll move approval for schematic approval. Just noting that comment that when you come back, we're excited to see that skinning and kind of other aspects of visibility. So that's my motion.
And I'll second it, Downing.
We have a motion and second. Further discussion. Yeah, I, I think if you could give us some perspectives that people would see as they're driving, that would kind of give us a better idea. You know, because obviously some areas can be more visible than others. So that'd be great. Michael, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes?
Downing.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations and good luck and looking forward to seeing you soon.
Thank you.
Clark Fulton, Metro Health Public Art Project. Who's all here for this one?
Good morning, Commission. Vince Ready is going to be doing the primary presentation and Susan Underwood is also here from Metro West.
Okay, so the two of them I'll need to swear in.
Okay.
Tara, I don't need to swear you in, but obviously you can start it off. So the other two that are going to speak to this, could you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
I do.
Go ahead, Tara.
Okay, good morning. This project, the Clark Fulton Metro Health Public Art Project, is a neighborhood-wide initiative. It was approved for, by, for the locations. There are a total of nine locations throughout the neighborhood, the Clark Fulton neighborhood. It was approved for the locations by the Near West Design Review on September twenty-second. And the installations are going to be occurring between this fall and spring of next year. They are funded by the NEA, National Endowment for the Arts, Land Studio, Metro Health, and the Cleveland Foundation's Creative Fusion Program and Metro West is a partner in this endeavor. Of the nine locations, eight of them will be mural work and one proposal is for a rooftop sculpture. And I'm going to go ahead and express my support for this project. I think it's a great space-making initiative to give more neighborhood identity through the lens of public art. I'm going to turn it over to Vince Ready for the presentation and just bear with us. There are a lot of slides, but he's going to move through those very quickly. As I said, this is locations only and the actual art concepts will come back at a later date. Thank you.
I just wanted to note, I'm recusing myself since Cleveland Foundation is a partner in this project.
Thanks, Lillian.
Thanks, Tara. I'm Vince Ready with Land Studio and I do have a very strict time limit from Tara, so I'm going to rush through these slides. Will you go to the next slide, please? As Tara mentioned, we have multiple funders and partners on this project. Land Studio, Metro West, Metro Health, and also, you know, I should add Councilwoman Santana. And we've gotten neighborhood feedback from members of Metro Health staff, a Neighborhood Art Committee that is, has, you know, somewhat fluid membership, but we've gotten voice, you know, opinions from various people in the community, members of the Clark Fulton Master Plan Committee, and we've gotten ideas on, you know, for artists and themes from those, from those various people. Next slide, please. This map just shows kind of an art walk or art loop that we're putting together, bounded on the north by Meyer, on the south by Sackett, and then Fulton and West Twenty-Fifth on the west and east. And then you see in the southeast corner is, that's an area that will be, you know, new parkland in front of the, the new metro campus in the future. I think we can go to the next slide and, actually the next slide after that. This is just a list of, of the projects that are in various stages. There's a, will be a temporary project on the Metro Health Outpatient Plaza, which is a building that will be coming down in the near future. At the Holcamp Organ Company, Coney Island Custard, Elk and Elk, a business on Twenty-Fifth Street. We're working on Half Moon Bakery, Strike Forest Taekwondo, Dicky's Lanes, Sweet Distribution, and the Meyer Pool, which is a, is a city facility. Next slide, please. These are various things that we asked from the, from the Neighborhood Art Committee to consider the artwork plans and offer reactions, sure that the interests of the neighborhood are well-served, contributing ideas about topics, themes, and style preferences, and hoping to, you know, expand a public art program in the neighborhood and also you develop, like, you support artists who live in the neighborhood. Although, all the artists will not be from the neighborhood, but we do want to provide support for them. Next slide, please. And these are some of the themes that the Neighborhood Art Committee came up with. Hope and resilience, welcoming, creativity, brightness and color, inclusive, inclusivity, racial equality and social justice and neighborhood pride and Latinx pride. Next slide, please. Can we go to the next slide? And this is the first one. This is, you know, at the outpatient pavilion at Metro Health. Go to the next slide, please. It's another view. Next slide, please. And if you could just go through these slides, the next four slides, go through quickly. This artist we've chosen is Lisa Quine for this. Here's some other, you know, just examples of her previous work. Next slide. Next slide. And next slide. I'm not saying please after each one, just to save some time. So here's the, this is Holcamp Organ, which is a very interesting building. The building has a very interesting history. The business has a very interesting history. You would not suspect how much, you know, what goes on behind these walls just from looking at it from the outside in that, you know, the, the box-like structure that sticks up from the top of the building is, you know, I won't get into the story of that, but it's actually a very form follows function type thing. The next slide, please.
That's for the pipes, isn't it?
Yes, when they assemble, since you asked, when they do assemble organs, you know, church organs essentially that they build in here, they sometimes do assemble them inside the building. So they need that extra space for the entire height of the building. Some potential art zones and, and, you know, even though this building is, you know, certainly historic, there are areas that have been painted over already. And so we're looking at those that is potential art areas. Next, next slide, please. And this is another view of the building. And next slide. Showing some more potential art zones. Next slide. Just another view of the top and potential art zone up there. And then Natalie Lanis is the, is the artist. She's a locally-based artist. And just some look, a view of some of her previous work. She also has a work that you might be familiar with. It's on Ontario Street under the Interbelt Bridge. Next slide, please. Okay, the next place is Coney Island Custard, which is a small ice cream stand on Fulton. And the, we had looked at different possibilities for this project, but ultimately what it's going to be is artwork on the little building. Go to the next slide, please. A view of it. Building is kind of, you know, and the artist we were looking at is Higa Gibberon. She's a local artist. She's most likely, she's going to do the design work this fall and it will probably be installed in the spring. This is some examples of her previous work. Very colorful and playful. These signs are just, this is going out to the next one here. This is a project, Creative Fusion, which was funded by, by- which was funded by Cleveland Foundation through the Creative Fusion Project. And we're showing, you know, this is a project that's already underway and been done and the various yard signs are designed by artists throughout the neighborhood. And you'll see in a minute why I'm bringing up Creative Fusion. To go to the next slide, please. In this building, Elk and Elk is, we're looking at this wall, the south-facing wall for an artwork. And this is an example of heat-applied vinyl and that's what we'll be using on that building. And so this is not for the project, it's just showing that the, how, you know, heat-applied vinyl looks like it's painted on. This is one of the signs Alicia Vesquez, she's a rapidly emerging artist in Cleveland and one of the yard signs that came through the Creative Fusion Project is this one. And so an enlarged version of that is what has been chosen. It will be altered somewhat for the building. The next slide, please. It's another view of the building and where, and this shows where the artwork would actually go. The next slide, please. This is another building and the little, the information about this is a little bit off. It's actually the north-facing side of the building and the cross street, I think, is Marvin rather than Daisy. And there's potential art location here. Artist hasn't been chosen yet, still working out the details with the building owner and the business owner, the Half Moon Bakery. The business owner has identified, you know, artists from the Signs of the Time Project, Amber Essner and Bruno Cassiano. Is, we did, you talked with owners of the businesses and buildings to get their input on, you know, and we presented different artists to them to see which, you know, whose style resonated with them. This is Strike Forest Taekwondo on Fulton. You know, and from the outside it looks kind of dismal, but you know, when you go inside this building, there's a lot happening. It's really an exciting place, like a kind of a neighborhood institution. This is another view of the building and then the next one is another view. This is actually the best wall, but maybe not the, you know, it's, because those two windows in front are never opened just because they, you know, they get broken a lot and things like that. But the window on the side street is open sometimes. So the business owner selected Augustus Turner, a local artist, based on his style. Here's some previous work by Augustus. Next slide. One that was done through the city's public art program. Next slide. A work by him, next slide. And I think then the next slide. Okay, next slide. We had a lot of examples. And this was the one that Tara was talking about, Dicky Lanes, Dicky Recreation, where we will be doing, hope to do a rooftop installation here. Next slide, please. Just some other views of the building. We thought about this north-facing wall, but it's not going to work out. The artist chosen is Ryan Jenke and these are all precedent images. The only one that Ryan was involved in is the corner light at Public Square, which is in the lower right corner. Next slide, please. This is Ryan. Then just the next couple of slides are views of his previous work. And corner light is a good example of what we're talking about here, since it is a three-dimensional artwork and a lot of his work is two-dimensional. And then Sweet Distribution. This, the artist hasn't been chosen yet. Details are still being worked out. And we're just, but looking at this wall, the south-facing wall as a possible artwork location. And this is another example, the same heat-applied vinyl example, slide. And these are just, these are just some ideas for the building. And the last one that we're talking about is Meyer Pool, which is a city project, obviously. And the work is already underway now, rebuilding the concrete platform in the front and doing work on the building. And what we're looking at there is work on the horizontal surface in the front and then possibly on the front wall of the building. And that's it. I didn't make, I didn't finish within the time set by Tara, but I almost did. So any question?
Yeah, so we're going to take it until next meeting, man. Sorry about that.
Oh, no.
Mr. Chairman, we have Director Collier with his hand raised.
Go ahead, Freddie.
Yeah, one comment and one question. One, with respect to comment. Clark Fulton's master plan, which we'll be adopting on the 15th, has a public art component. Has there been any conversation with the local development corporation and others with respect to how the public art recommendations in that plan dovetail the proposals before us today?
Yes, I can speak to that.
Yes, please.
I'm Susie. I do, I work at Metro West. I'm the art coordinator there. And myself and Kristin Zallis, Associate Director, have been part of this planning team and I will personally be managing half the projects funded by Metro Health. So we're looking at connections there as far as, you know, content themes, but also there will be accompanying projects that aren't included in this presentation, such as pole banners, where there will be some language pulled out of the master plan. So it's really useful there. And then also there will be some creative wayfinding engagement with local artists that lives in the neighborhood, Jen Cron, some temporary stencil kits that will be, she'll be using to install some kind of wayfinding, but like not official wayfinding, creative stencil. And then we'll also be passing those kits out to the neighborhood. And then we are also working with the Neighborhood Art Committee to kind of, and with, you know, looking at the master plan to see how we can partner on some of the engagement pieces as we roll this out next year. So yeah, it's definitely something that I think is a really useful toolkit to have and we're at a perfect time to be looking at some of the results there from that master plan and incorporating it into this project.
Right. And the other item is with safe routes to schools. We've identified routes that children typically take to schools. This was a plan that was obviously adopted a few years ago, but with the decorative crosswalks, maybe looking at opportunities around school buildings, since these are now allowed on residential streets. But looking at those school buildings, where they sit and where these crosswalks could be added in that vein. And then lastly, real quick, Vince, I love the fact that the last artist that you used, his work seems to address the entirety of a wall facade. It's a difference when you have just the frame of artwork that sits on a wall in a square versus utilizing the whole wall as a canvas. A lot of times in the neighborhood, we would see a mural done and then graffiti would be done on the remainder of the wall. But when you have the facade being utilized fully as a canvas, it can actually serve as a deterrent to that. So I just want you to make note, you know, if you have opportunities to take advantage of the entire wall facade, you should definitely do so, just as a suggestion.
So noted.
Commission members?
I move.
And just to remind you, so this is approval for location only.
I move approval, Downing.
Second.
We have a motion in second, further discussion. Michael, call the roll.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Slime.
Yes.
Motion carries. Looking forward to seeing the art coming back.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Far West Design Review. This is for Med Vet, Cleveland Animal Hospital. New construction seeking final approval. Who's here for this one?
I am Joe Powell.
Okay, Joe, do you soundly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
I do.
Go ahead.
I do.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. May I interrupt? I'm sorry. I have it on the agenda as final, but we didn't actually go through design review, so I'd like to have this as schematic design approval and give them the chance to do the foundation work and the site work, but then come back through design review for final approval on the building. So my apologies for that.
So this is schematic approval. Thank you. So who's going to lead this one off?
I will. So as you can see, we are proposing a turnkey animal hospital for Med Vet. It's approximately a 35,000 square foot facility. We are going to be at one floor, approximately 26 feet in height at maximum height locations. Where we're at is, you know, as you can tell, you come off 71, take 480 and then we are into this, this corporate park area. Next slide, please. Okay, so as you can see, you know, here we are. This is what we're showing. This is about where we're at as a four-acre site. We have the river behind us and we have a butt up to the metro parks. We're working with the metro parks to kind of make sure that we are, you know, staying off that river approximately 100, 150 feet with no construction. So all of that in the back will actually be maintained and upkept. We'll then have a retention pond behind that and then we'll have some behind parking, our facility and then parking in the front. We're trying to address the pond to the, to the east of there. Next slide.
Can this slide slow down? There we go.
So here in this next picture, what we're trying to identify is, you know, this is the main intersection. We have some local businesses right here, some like a subway and those kind of things, very institutional, very, you know, quick and needed. Behind that, we have another facility for a title company and we're kind of showing addressing like all the parking in the front there. They've got some landscaping trees. So we're just trying to give you an idea of what that context is. Next slide. So the other side, if you get there, I'm going to kind of look ahead. What it is is the, trying to get an idea of materiality and how our building is going to look and match, you know, with similar areas adjacent to it, but yet still, you know, increase and then develop the area. What we're showing here is, you know, basically another facility there. Next slide. The next two slides are really kind of looking at the adjacent retention pond and how we're going to try to address that and approach that. And then kind of what the existing site looks like. You can kind of go to the one more slide ahead as well. And what that does is, you know, it shows the existing entryway, you know, we're going to have a little pond in the front and then kind of moving forward through there. Keep going. So we're just trying to show a general idea of kind of what's in the area, what's around here. Should you feel like we're meeting your guys' needs? So as we get to, I think we can kind of skip ahead to, I guess, the first kind of rendering, which would be slide 14. What we have here is a series of materials, being some metal panel where the Med Vet actual sign is. And we'll have a little bit of metal panel with divisions to kind of create an interest along the top piece of it. And then a butt glaze glass system on the south wall. As you enter into the facade, you'll have an Eldorado stone, which will kind of give it grounding and kind of root it into the facility, into the earth and make it more part of what we're doing. To the next, we like to call it the, I guess, the mohawk, kind of give it a little bit of an interest, which is an ethos, you know, with a series of reveals is through that. And to the next, just to the next portion of that is more, it's a different kind. So the butt glaze glass glazing we have is storefront system where we have the millions, just to kind of create a pattern or a rhythm of what's around. So that's really what you're going to see from the front side. If we go to, I guess, the, as you kind of, you can kind of just kind of skip through some of those. And really what a lot of it, after you get from the front, is as you kind of go around the side, you'll have like banners of glass where it's clear store, so you can kind of begin to get light into the medical facility. And so they have a nice area where they can feel relieved and relax. You know, a lot of, a lot of our clients are stressed. They're worried about the medical conditions of their friends that they brought in with us and we want to create like a warm, soft feeling of health and growth and development and possibility. So we're trying to bring in as much light as we can, as you see in the front. But really what the facility consists of is metal panel, ethos and glazing and a little bit of stone to kind of give it some root and ground into the facility. I think we can move ahead. I'm trying to go quickly here. If you go to the site plan, you can see there, which I think is slide 25, I have perfect. You can see starting from the front, you'll have that little intersection where we come in off the side. What we have here is like a little pond in the front and then we're creating some landscaping in between that and we have landscaping all along the east side here along the access path. And we have like variations of sizes with evergreens and deciduous and a little deformed brass. And so we can still, we also have a reef room on the east portion there where we can kind of have reflect upon the pond and hopefully be soothing and calm. And then you have a lot of the parking in the back. Then we have another little retention pond and then all the untouched area that will have woods and what have you back there.
So Joe, when a person comes in with their dogs, where would the dog eliminate before they come into the building? I don't know about you, but I bring my dogs to the vet. They always have to go.
Well, it's very tense for them. It's very tense and, you know, we factor that in there and actually, you know, we know that people get excited and their friends get excited as well. So we try to use materials like, once you get in the facility, actually, we try to let them, we know that accidents are going to occur and we use a material that's easily absorbed.
No, but do you have any kind of area for people to let their dogs? I mean, I don't see a dog run or a place for people to have their dogs eliminate before they come in.
So the idea is like we have those little islands along the parking lot and then we have something all along that east access there. And then, you know, as you go into the front, one of our slides, we actually have a little zone right there where we have some landscaping and some stones and some grass.
Okay, maybe we can skip. Okay.
Yeah, and that's right in that corner kind of as you enter in. So we think that that might be some opportunities there for little presence.
Is this a 24-hour facility? They do emergency?
Some, yes, they will do emergencies periodically, so.
And it is 24 hours.
Yes.
That must be the vet.
Yes, it is. I guess.
Can I ask a question? Sorry. I know you're still going, but while you're on this slide. I have some mixed emotions about this, just in that, you know, obviously this is a pretty wooded area up against a stream, a river, stream, riparian zone, flood zone. So I'm wondering also, in addition to the metro parks, if you've talked to the sewer district about this site and it's a lot of surface parking. So, you know, have you had any thoughts or ideas or discussions or partnerships with the sewer district on this being permeable? And I'm thinking about the runoff and the directly into the stream on the backside of this building. And it seems a bit problematic to me.
You know, what we're doing is we have the retention pond in the front and the retention pond in the back. And the idea is that we will be able to, you know, some of that runoff will actually run towards the front and then once you get behind the building, it'll run towards the back and be collected into those little retention ponds on either side. And then on the one side, we will kind of be able to utilize portion of that existing pond on that side. And then on the one side, we will kind of be able to utilize portion of that existing pond on that side. And then off to the backside of it, you know, we really, that last hundred and some feet, we're really kind of leaving that untouched and not addressing any of that. Area and try to work with the metro parks on what they're wanting for and what they're trying to achieve there.
Okay. I mean, I, I love this use. I appreciate it. And so I'm not being critical of the need and the, the use here. Um, I would suggest, I know you're gonna go meet with design review, that you also meet with the sewer district before you come back as well. And explore, um, some of their, um, stormwater management programs. And there are some funds there if you do things, um, a little differently. So, um. Anyway, uh, we'll get there, but I, I, I think as part of our motion, we should have you at least come back with sort of. What, in addition to the metro parks, uh, the sewer districts kind of reading of this as well.
You know, one of the things that we did do is we did submit our SWAP and that's kind of, uh, keeping the. And, and I think that is in motion. I, I believe that we've got that. I'm not for certain, but I believe that we've got our SWAP so far, so it should help.
I think Lilian's talking about actually having a conversation with the regional sewer district.
Ah, okay.
They, they really look at green infrastructure and gray infrastructure. And that, if you do things correctly, they'll, they'll even help pay for it.
Oh, okay.
Uh, that's where I was going, but I think also just, um, you know, we're trying to protect our streams and our. Um, you know, kind of the, we're doing a whole series of projects with the sewer district to, to repair problems. So I just want to make sure that they have been engaged in this. And, and so I, I know that they would be happy to meet with you and see this project in advance. And so, um, when we get there, I think that, that in addition to going through design review, you should come back with that as well. Um, it, so anyway, you keep going.
Don't they want to start with the foundation with this level of approval? I mean, that's my concern.
Yeah, it is a bit of an issue. So you're right, Diane. We'll finish your presentation and we'll discuss.
Uh, no, I mean, I'm good. I, I feel pretty good where we're at.
But Joe, if I can.
We also have Director Collier.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, we had Director Collier had his hand raised, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Just, we do have a riparian setback ordinance that's in place. Um, so I think that we can check it against that, but I know that when it goes through the building department, it's supposed to be evaluated. Um, and looked at through that lens. Uh, so the riparian setback ordinance, uh, we passed. Uh, I believe is about maybe four or five years ago. Um, that restricted, uh, building within, uh, so many feet of a one-way attributedary. Um, this may not apply here, but just want to give you a heads up that that's something that may be evaluated.
All right, thank you. Someone else is trying to speak, I think.
So this is Paul Brown. Um, regarding the stormwater, uh, our civil engineer, McKay engineer, he's been working very closely. With the metro parks and city departments, uh, the county, et cetera. You can't tell from this plan, but we are quite a distance because the metro park setbacks from the river. Uh, then in terms of stormwater, the two ponds on the site, the one on the left side of your screen and the right side. Those, those are actually filtration ponds. So all the stormwater goes into those ponds, gets filtered and cleansed. And then it goes into, once it's cleansed, into the detention pond on the south side. They're the long linear pond. And, and then into the city system. So there's no stormwater. Uh, any, there's nothing heading toward the metro parks. Metro parks have been very detailed, making sure that stormwater, you know, light pollution from sight lighting. All those elements, there's no impact on the parks. Uh, there's deep setbacks from the river. And so we have worked closely with them, uh, both on stormwater and, uh, protection of the parks and the river. So there's no impact to the metro parks and the river, uh, based on this plan. Everything is handled onsite, filtered. Then to the master pond and then into the city system.
I mean, the issue for me is not the metro parks, because I've never heard that they have any regulatory authority of this. It's the sewer district. So that's what's confusing me a little bit. Um, so, um, I've just never heard that before, even though the metro parks is trying to do things through here. It's they, they have no authority based on this issue. It's really the sewer district. And where I'm going to is to have a conversation with them, because you're also going to be charged. Um, for this amount of impervious parking. They actually, there will be a stormwater fee, even I think even, I'm, I'm out of my scope here. But even if you're collecting it on site, because of how much paved surface you have, the, the sewer district will look at that. So I'm just suggesting a quick meeting with them. Um, I think it's important to have it. Um, I also wonder if you actually need this much parking. Um, or if you're overbuilding for this. And I don't know the business and, you know, I, and I would argue that if you think you need less. That the city would have no issue from a, I wouldn't, I would make a motion even. That said, that if this is somehow the amount of parking that this, you think the city is requiring you to have for this use, but you don't need it. We should reconsider it unless you really think you need this much parking. It's an awful lot of parking. So, um.
I think that goes back to the, the VAT if, if.
But, but I'm asking, is it, is it, this is code? You're looking at square footage and use and we're coming up with what you think the city wants you. So that you don't need a variance, um, because that, or is it that you really need this much parking?
This is above code and it's based on other facilities. We have twenty-three hospitals around the country. And the pet ownership is dramatically increasing. We're not sure if it's because COVID and people be more isolated in relationships. But pet ownership's increasing and demand's increasing and we obviously don't want to have and can't have, uh, by code offsite parking. So it's, it's based on demand of staff and visitors.
Pet ownership's thirty percent up. Um, so how many rooms are there in this?
Man, the space plan, Joe.
Yeah, yeah, if we go down to slide, um. I guess slide twenty-six, I mean, we have, you know, ten exam or, or, yeah, we have about.
Oh, there we go.
Fourteen exam rooms. Then we have a number of offices, a large conference room.
There we go.
So this is, you know, a full, full-blown animal hospital here, so.
It's especially hospital. So this is cancer care, orthopedics, cardiology, radiology. It's, it's, uh.
Do you have dermatology in here?
Actually, we do. Dermatology, ophthalmology, yes. That's great.
So I could bring my whole herd there.
Yes, you could bring everybody. That's the goal.
So what's the time schedule on this?
So we are to, we're hoping to be breaking ground in, uh, this month. And then I believe it was December, is that right, Paul? That we're gonna be done with this? Not this December, but, uh, next December.
Actually, the, if we can break grounds, we were trying to get out there with the winter coming quickly here, uh, get out there now. We should be able to finish by next August. So, uh, perhaps operating seeing patients, you know, September, October one of next year.
Gotcha. All right.
So I, I don't want to slow you down, but I'll make a motion that maybe can help everyone, which is. Um, I would make a motion for schematic approval with the condition that you meet with the sewer district. And report back to Freddie on what you've heard before you can get the foundation permit. And obviously you still have to go through design review and come back for final. But before you can pull the foundation permit, we need you to have come back to Freddie with a meeting with the sewer district. And their, um, their, their thoughts and recommendations after that meeting before you can pull that permit.
Okay, so we have a motion?
I'll second that.
We have, we have. We have councilman.
Okay, we have a motion second. Further discussion, who do we have, Maurice?
I'm, I'm okay with, I'm, I'm okay with the motion proceeding. Um, as this is Ward seventeen, I'm excited for this project, uh, to move forward. And I think that as, as these additional conversations are happening, as Lilian suggested. Uh, we can help them move forward with at least the, the, the foundation of the building and know that there's maybe some questions about the site that we just need to check on.
Yep. Great. Thanks, Councilman. Notice this is a great project.
Yeah, I mean, the spirit of my motion, Councilman, is to, to not have them have to come back here, but not have them start till late. That's a couple of weeks, right? Have that conversation and then come back to Freddie who can sign off on it at that point. Do you know what I mean? Is that okay?
Yeah.
Sounds good. Okay. Motion is second. Anyone else? Michael, call the role, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Hurry.
Yes.
McCray Scott. I beli- I believe she has left. She had an appointment, I believe.
All right, I'm slight.
Yes.
Motion carries. Good luck. Looking forward to seeing you again. And no one else is allowed to leave. So no one else can leave.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
How many more do we have?
Uh, we have downtown flats, which is a facade seeking final approval. Um, and this was disapproved and then the urban renaissance with Hart mural. And that's it. There's two more. So let's keep, let's keep on going. Downtown flats, design review, uh, facade renovation. This is for fifty-five public square. Who is here for this? Anyone?
Well, we have Terry Fields.
Terry, are you on the phone here?
She's muted.
Can you unmute her?
Uh, no, there she goes.
Pardon me. I'm sorry. Couldn't get unmuted there for a second.
So, um, I, I'm gonna swear you in. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
I do. Terry Fields.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Uh, good morning. Um, yeah, we're looking at, uh, fifty-five public square. The tower, I'm sure you're all familiar with, that we're concentrating on the, uh, one-story volume that was, that's attached to it. And if we're looking at slide one, I'm sorry, I can't see what you're seeing for some reason. Um, but if we're looking at the first slide, uh, it shows a site plan and then two context photos.
Yes.
To it. Yeah, and, uh, uh. Those context photos, uh, show the, the red brick, uh, uh, that's basically a lick and stick tile. Uh, on the south wall of that facade. And then the, uh, the south, you know, the, uh, site plan is just showing what we're looking at. And I don't know if you can see it very well in this one, but the affected walls are the east wall that faces into the courtyard. The entirety of the south wall of the one-story volume and about eight, maybe nine feet of the west wall. Uh, if we can move to the next slide.
So it's where the restaurant used to be?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Uh, so we are, uh, looking to basically take down the, uh, those two existing atriums. From a nineteen seventy-nine renovation, uh, strip the south wall of the existing material. Um, blow out the east wall, uh, which is pretty much already blown out. Um, in terms of, right, in terms of solid structure, it's, there's nothing there. It's mostly storefront. And, uh, we're looking to remove and replace the existing. Egress doors at the west side there. If we can move to the next slide, uh, you can see that, that, uh, that's what I was describing. And also, we're looking at that wall at the south is a concrete block wall. We're looking to remove, uh, three sections of that to implement some new glazing in that wall. When you do the next slide, that shows, uh, existing elevations, the demolition that we're proposing. And then, uh, slide number five is our, uh, is our plan proposal, which, um. You know, is, is, uh, like I said, we are looking at on the east wall to, uh, implement a couple of new sets of doors. The one there at the bottom would be for a future vestibule as part of the new restaurant. Uh, the doors above that, the bi-part doors, um, you know, are, are going to be used as part of a, the patio. Dining that's associated with the restaurant. And then the, the rest of that wall is storefront. We are proposing a canopy above, uh, that eastern wall. We're proposing an ACM, uh, aluminum composite metal siding with slight reveals as the material for the. South wall, um, that would be in three colors that are basically taken from the tower itself, which is black and gray and white. Uh, the windows on that south wall will be white. The storefront on the east wall would be black. The, uh, egress door and its frame would be black. And we can move on to the next slide that's showing the, uh, the elevations as we're proposing. Um, you can see the canopy in the east elevation there with a row of clear story glass above it. And, uh, if you see the cladding panel ledge, and that's the, uh, you know, just the basic, uh, schematic of, um, the colors. We're only talking about three colors and like I said, they're pulled from the, from the existing tower. Uh, the following slide number seven, um, is just showing the wall section in details, the construction of, uh, what we're looking at. You can see on number three, the wall section that the canopy is going to be supported by cantilevered beams, um, from new columns placed there. Uh, slide number eight is, uh, showing details associated with that beam. Uh, we're looking at, at having the, the canopy itself is intended to be. A trellis type canopy, uh, painted wood with a, uh, polycarbonate, um, surface. To protect, uh, you know, to offer some protection under the canopy, but without, uh, without it being wholly opaque. So it would still be, you know, transparent. And then the, uh, that drawing in the bottom right corner there, number one. Um, shows the plan of that canopy. Then, uh, the next slide number nine is to showing the storefront types, door types, um, associated with the project. Uh, slide number nine is, we've just included as a reference, they are taken directly from the nineteen fifty-nine. Drawings when the restaurant, um, was, was, uh, added. Uh, you can see at the east elevation that we're basically going back to a very similar, uh, proposition. That what existed there previously, uh, the south elevation was an opaque marble wall. The west elevation, uh, remains, uh, today as it is presented here. Uh, it's pretty much the only elevation that has that status. Uh, the next, uh, slide just shows some, uh, period photos. Uh, from nineteen seventy-nine, uh, those proposals for that actual renovation. And then if we get to, uh, the twelfth slide, this are the, uh, the material colors that we're looking at. For the siding. And, uh, the little kit of parts associated with that, uh, with that particular siding pipe. Which is, like I said, an ACM. And then, uh, slide thirteen, uh, starts, um, some renderings. Of the, of the project. Uh, that's a view from the southeast showing the restaurant entry, uh, portions of the plaza design. Um, slide number fourteen shows, uh, the south wall and in context to the building. Self, and slide number fifteen shows the, uh. The west wall and the south wall, uh, together. And that's what we have today. If you have any questions.
So, could someone tell us about why this was disapproved yesterday and about the conversation?
Uh, Anthony Centaur from our downtown, uh, flats committee.
Uh, thank you, Director. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this project was heard yesterday by the downtown flats design review, um, committee. And they decided to recommend, uh, disapproval. And the conversation was mainly around the, um, design. And a lot of the committee members felt that the design was, um, very overstated. Uh, it seemed more like a signature piece than a complimentary piece to the historic building. Additionally, there were issues with the amount of glazing that's being, uh, put into the, um, renovation. Uh, there was strong sentiment that the applicant should put a lot more glazing so that it has a better street presence from the restaurant. the applicant should put a lot more glazing so that it has a better street presence from the restaurant to draw people to it. Uh, currently, there are very limited amounts of glazing, uh, being put in on the south facade and just replications on the west facade. Um, and I understand that the applicant is working with, um, Shippo and, uh, I believe another agency, um, but they felt like there wasn't enough discussion about whether or not the uh, applicant had taken the current designs to Shippo to, uh, see their thoughts on them, and if they could push the glazing, um, a lot farther.
Thank you, Anthony. So has Shippo seen this?
They have seen, they have not seen this particular scheme yet, they've seen iterations of it, and the pushback and the previous iterations was the amount of glazing, they were not pleased uh, with the amount of glazing that we proposed, which was a substantial amount more than what we're showing, uh, currently. We believe, based on those previous conversations, that they're going to be comfortable with this, that we're finally gonna hit a compromise with them. But that, that's speculation on my part, in all transparency, but I say it with a certain degree of confidence.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, we ha- we have, uh, Councilman Sly and Director Collier with their hands raised.
Go ahead, uh.
Thank you, it, yeah, my question was similar, uh, that, that confirming that this was, had to be all be done in accordance with Shippo, and I guess my, my thinking aloud point is, are we putting the cart before the horse by approving something when we don't have anything in writing from, uh, the state historic preservation office, even if we are able to, you know, safely speculate what they would say?
Well, our, uh, our hope, uh, honestly, was that, uh, if we gained approval from the city for this scheme and go back to Shippo, uh, believing that they are also going to be, that that may just be, uh, you know, the impetus to, uh, to, to close, uh, the compromise, right, to, to, to tidy it up. I don't, that's just an honest answer in it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Go ahead.
Uh, so there's a unique, uh, conflict here, um, with respect to the issue of glazing. Uh, as you all know, um, our goal, uh, and the commission's goal, has been to activate our street fronts.
Yeah.
Uh, we know that glazing is a, uh, key component to doing that, particularly in a location like this. Um, with respect to the committee's, um, uh, much more aggressive, uh, uh, position, um, the issue that I see here is the facade on West Third. Uh, West Third is gonna be across, uh, obviously from the Sherwin-Williams headquarters. We are allowing for a garage facility to be built new on West Third, requiring ground floor retail as well as skinning of the upper floors of the garage, all with the goal of helping to, uh, make West Third much more pedestrian oriented. Um, so therefore, that facade on West Third, I would strongly suggest has more aggressive glazing. The minimal windows on the side of the restaurant where the, uh, uh, the signage is along, uh, Frankfurt. Um, the architectural treatment there is, I think, very tasteful. Um, but again, it'll be across, uh, from the, uh, the pavilion, uh, for Sherwin-Williams, so I just think it's important that these sides interact. And if Shippo or the state historic, uh, preservation office is, you know, saying that, uh, they don't wanna see glazing, I think that's a unique, uh, conflict. So I think, um, we may wanna take one more, you know, stab at trying to get this to a point where there is a, uh, an endorsement, you know, by the, uh, design review and planning commission, 'cause I agree with the gentleman that if we come to a conclusion, that may help the conversation or help the ultimate determination that Shippo makes. But I heard what Councilman, uh, Sly, uh, said about the cart before the horse, but I think it might help us, um, if in fact, a, uh, determination uh, is made at some point and sharing that with Shippo.
So, Director?
Yes.
Basically, are we talking about asking for the increase of glazing? And then them going back to Shippo to increase the glazing amount?
Yeah, that's what I would, that's the approach that I would, uh, I think would be feasible, um, one, to continue to advance the project, but also, you know, we, we have certain things that we are, uh, been very aggressive, uh, on, particularly when it comes to walkability. And, you know, from a commission, you know, standpoint, we've always been proponents of, you know, glazing and transparency, uh, particularly on ground floor facilities, particularly in our central business district in downtown.
Well, and the height of the glazing, too.
Yeah.
I mean, look where it is.
Yeah. Yeah, they're, 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 they're very small windows, that's a, that's a pretty heavy wall uh, on West Third. It's a flat wall with a couple of windows, it, it reminds me of a, uh, commercial structure on that side.
Um, I apologize, I really have to jump off, I had a noon, and, um, and I was twelve fifteen, but um, I wonder if we should table this for two weeks, um.
But it would be great if we had comments, so he could go to Shippo with them.
Well, I'm not sure it's our, our role, I mean, the designer review turned it down, so, um, I think they need to go back and, um, and work, and go back through design review and come back in two weeks, I do, I mean.
I agree too, but I think we wanted to go to Shippo, so taking the comments of the glazing and the placement of the glazing, I think is really important.
Right, well, yes, but that, that, I mean, I don't know.
Right, okay, so, uh, do you wanna make a motion to table?
Yeah, I wanna make a motion to table, date certain two weeks, and have the group work with the design review, the local design review. Um, and, um, and if Shippo within two weeks and come back.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion second, further discussion. Michael, call the role, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Sly.
Yes.
Uh, looking forward to seeing you come back. Urban Renaissance with Heart Mural.
Thank you, this mural is, um, being funded.
Who's gonna speak to this that's not staff? Are you speaking to Tara?
You can go straight to it.
No, no, I just wanna swear whoever in.
Oh, okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Who's gonna speak?
Robin Robinson from St. Kofa Fine Arts.
Okay, Robin, um, do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
I do.
I do.
Mr. Chairman, we've lost a quorum, I think.
Lillian, are you still there?
No, she's not.
Um, we lost a quorum. So, we could do a couple of things, we could hear it, we could get a sense of the commission, and then we can vote on it next time, and Tara could be, Tara could just show up.
Okay.
Because it won't be official until we have a quorum.
That's fine with me, if it's okay with Tara.
That's fine.
I'm trying not to waste everyone's time.
I appreciate that.
Okay, go ahead.
So, um, this mural at one fourteen oh one, uh, St. Clair Avenue is not within a design review district, so it's coming straight to you all as, uh, planning commission members for the approval, um, the artists that have the studio in that facility, um, uh, Gary Williams and Robin Robinson have several murals that have come before you, uh, and gotten approvals in the past, they're, um, very, um, adept at, uh, engaging with the community around them with their, with their artwork before installation, um, and they, um, most recently were one of the artists that did, um, one of the Cleveland Walls murals, which was a big, um, uh, festival that gained, um, national attention. So I wanna turn it over to Robin and let her go through her presentation, I am in support of this, especially knowing the backstory that went into the mural, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Robin.
All right, thank you for having me. All right, so first slide, this is the, uh, it's on East one hundred and fourteenth Street and St. Clair, the address is fourteen, one fourteen oh one. Uh, just letting you know, this is an aerial view that is obsolete at this point, but this is the most recent aerial view we could, we had. Everything on the east side of, uh, our building going down towards one hundred and tenth street.
Yes.
Oh my, I'm sorry, I was corrected, the west side, going down towards one hundred and tenth street is vacant now, it's all been razed, so there's nothing between, um, east one hundred and tenth street and our building, which makes the, uh, the mural more up, more, um, visible. Next slide, please. Okay, so this is the front of the building. Uh, this is the only building between one hundred and tenth street and one hundred and fifteenth street. Um, it used to be a, uh, Trotters Cleaners, we are, um, on the west corner of the building, and we're talking about that side wall um, on one hundred and fourteenth street going north. Next slide, please.
Uh, I just wanna show you, I found a more recent aerial, just wanna bring this up real quick for you, so you can see this.
Oh, very good, thank you.
Charles, got someone with you?
Yes, exactly, so you see how visible this mural will be from one hundred and tenth street, there is nothing obscuring this mural.
This is out in the country.
Yes, pretty much. This is, this is what St. Clair is starting to look like. But, uh, yes, absolutely, thank you for this aerial view.
Sure, hold just one second, and I'll switch back to the presentation.
All right.
So Charles has one of his constituents with him.
Okay, so next slide.
We should, he should be able to vote.
Okay, so as you see, this is going north on East one hundred and fourteen street. Next slide, please. And this is the wall in question. So, this wall, as I said, is completely visible. Um, and, uh, so we're asking to be able to put a mural on this wall um, in consultation with the community in different, uh, venues, the community wanted something vibrant, colorful, more abstract than just a portrait of, of someone that we um, are tip, are known for doing, so this is what we're trying to do. Next slide, please. Okay, this is another, uh, visual of that wall, and you can see there's an empty lot beside us and across the street, so everything is vacant around us, we are the only building on this entire block. Next slide, slide, please, this is going, a visual going towards one hundred and tenth street. Next slide, please. This is the, the, um, schematics of the building and the mural that we're, that we're, uh, planning to do, and it's, uh, forty-eight feet wide, fifteen feet high. Thank you, this is the, the, uh, concept of the buil- of the, uh, we wanted to do it, um, vibrant, bright colors that would be, uh, visible from that distance. And this has been community approved.
Thank you.
One thing I wanted to mention real quick, um, because I forgot earlier, the funding is, um, Cuyahoga Arts and Culture and Ohio Arts Council, um, just so you guys know that, and Robin, can you tell us what the text says at the bottom of the mural, please?
Um, this is an abstracted view of Langston Hughes, and Langston Hughes, um, has a presence in uh, Glenville. And it, it, on one side says Glenville, on the other side says Langston Hughes. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so we can't really vote on this, but I find it attractive, I would vote in the affirmative of this. What do the other commission members think?
I would too.
All right.
All right.
So, we're gonna have to vote on it the next meeting and the next meeting, um, Maurice, let's put this first in line. And Robin, you don't have to come back, I think Tara, you can go through it quickly and show, you know, whoever's there, these images.
Yeah, that's no problem.
All right, well, thank you all very much.
Thanks for sticking with us, Robin.
No problem at all, thank you, have a good day.
You too. Okay, I, I guess we're adjourned, we don't have a quorum anymore, eh, or director's report, uh, Freddie, you got something to say to the few of us?
Just, uh, a reminder next week, guys, that, uh, we have a special, uh, meeting for the Midtown Master Plan, the remainder of the year is gonna be extremely, uh, congested, uh, as we are, uh, trying to get, um, a number of things, uh, adopted, uh, going into the new year. And, um, on November fifth, we're gonna be presenting for the first time the, uh, form-based, uh, code uh, draft for you guys to take a look at and react to, um, and that's all I have for today.
Thanks, Freddie, everyone have a great weekend.
Freddie, Freddie, if you've got special meetings, can you get those to us as soon as possible?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, the only one we have on the books right now is the, um, the Midtown one, so, uh, every other one.